Having advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum, I'm happy to announce the beginning of our special fall town meeting. If I could just ask one of our Zoom admins over here to mute your speaker on your PC over on the left. Thank you. So tonight, as is obvious, since you are all here virtually, we will be conducting town meeting with our recent approach as a virtual town meeting. My approach will be to conduct the introductory portion as we always do, starting with the pledge of allegiance. Then I will read a motion to conduct this meeting as a remote town meeting as required by the legislation that enables remote town representative town meetings to do so. The motion modify some of our rules and I'll explain when finished, the reasons why we'll then answer any questions. And vote on the motion. If the motion passes, the meeting will continue. If the motion fails, I'll adjourn the meeting and we will reconvene at some future time and place. So off we go. So in keeping with tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. So please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sorry, was hearing an echo. So having been advised by the town clerk that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare the quorum is present for the transaction of business. I'd like to remind the body that we are still operating under our town meeting rules as adopted in our May 2021 annual town meeting. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, by the way, that means we'll not have to read all 15 of the rules again. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters which must be taken up. First. Permission has been requested for certain members and personnel of the school committee, the planning board, the board of health and other boards committees and departments. Who are not town meeting members to attend with other members of their respective boards, committees and departments upon the understanding of course that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body in the chat window. And I see none. Such permission will be and hereby is accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Cable Vision to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there are. I'll skip the point about side by side mics and no objection in the chat room. These will be the procedural rooms for the meeting. So right now I'd like to entertain a motion to conduct this as a remote town meeting. So I will first read this motion and then look in the chat for someone to say so moved and then a second. So motion to conduct a remote town meeting moved that the town of Milton conducts its 2021 special fall town meeting as a remote town meeting. Using the Zoom webinar technology as recommended by the town moderator and approved by the select board on Wednesday, September 8, 2021. Further during the 2021 special fall remote town meeting, only the following rules will be modified to conform with the limitations of the Zoom webinar technology. Rule one is replaced in its entirety by the following. First, town meeting members are required to register for town meeting with the town clerk and join town meeting via a computing device by clicking on the town meeting link emailed to them in advance. The town clerk will confirm their registration as they are admitted to the remote town meeting. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members will only be admitted to the remote town meeting with the prior permission of the moderator. Rule two is modified as follows. Second comma, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first click the raise hand button. And upon being recognized by the moderator will identify herself or himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you are not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article. Please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. Rule 11 is modified as follows. 11th, upon a question being put to the town meeting. The moderator will first determine by electronic vote the sense of the meeting. The moderator will display and announce the results of the electronic vote. If the vote is doubted by 25 town meeting members clicking the raise hand button. Then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order. And each town meeting member upon his her name being called shall unmute their microphone and answer yes or no. I see in the chat, we have a movement so moved by Denny Swen Swenson, pardon me, seconded by Brian Walsh. So if we could post the poll. And we'll have to wait a few seconds for some panelists, some town meeting members to move from our panel window to our attendee window. You're going to replace that. Folks, we're a little fast on the trigger with that poll, so we're going to pull down this poll. And we'll start the vote again in just a few seconds. You can launch the poll whenever you're ready. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed signify by voting no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could also unmute the phones. On the phones, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no on the phone. Thank you. We can mute the phone. And I think we can display the results. The motion carries 97% yes, 2% no, and 1% abstained. So the motion carries. We will proceed with our remote town meeting. Thank you very much. So certain matters coming before town meeting require a two thirds vote in accordance with chapter 448 of the acts of 1996. I'll entertain the following procedural motion which allows the moderator to declare a two thirds vote has occurred. The motion is. On matters requiring a two thirds vote by statute account need not be taken unless the vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters as provided in general laws, chapter 39, section 15. Will someone in support, please say so moved Brian Walsh so moved. Is there a second? In the chat room. Thank you. Kathleen key seconds. Okay. Can you move the panelists and we'll take the vote? Just give me a nod. Okay, we'll launch the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed signify by voting no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And if you could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, signify by signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, signify by saying no.
Yes.
We can use the phones. And display the results. The motion carries 95% yes, 1% no, and 4% abstained. With that, some observations of this meeting this year, we will have several, at least one article that requires a two thirds vote. I'll inform you of those before we vote on those motions. We'll begin tonight with some introductory remarks. I'd like to start with Brian Furs and Lee Michael McLean have an announcement. If we can make sure Mr. Furs is a panelist. So he can. You can see his video.
Brian, you should be in there.
No, good evening.
Mr. Furs, we can see you. You're recognized.
Thank you. I will be brief. Good evening. I'm so very pleased and excited to be here to present an exciting gift to our school committee and to the students of Milton. By a brief way of background, as many of you may know, my husband Lee Michael McLean and I were subjected to harassment for five years. By way of letters sent to our home and addressed to mean derogatory names that bullied us as a gay couple. The Milton police were involved, but until recently. We were unable to determine the source of the harassment. Then this past spring, we serendipitously received a handwriting sample from the perpetrator. Out of frustration, Lee Michael posted this to Facebook to see if any of our neighbors recognized the handwriting. A subscription request in the name of Michelle Fritzy. The result of that post was twofold. One amazing result was that a local neighbor filed a Freedom of Information Act request to review all of the election documents from the 2020 election. And managed to identify through handwriting analysis, the perpetrator. The neighbor brought this to the police's attention. The perpetrator was arrested. And he is awaiting arraignment for criminal harassment in Quincy District Court. Amazing. The second result was that we were overwhelmed and overcome by the amount of support that the Milton community showed us through comments on that Facebook post. It was so redeeming after years of fear and anger to have so many of our neighbors reach out to let us know that we were welcome here. One neighbor, select board member Mike Zulis proclaimed, I am Michelle Fritzy. Owning the pejorative name the perpetrator had labeled us with. Well, one thing led to another, and as many of you know, our family soon found ourselves selling T-shirts emblazoned with hashtag I am Michelle Fritzy. We thought we would raise a couple of thousands of dollars with support from our neighbors selling these T-shirts in Milton. And donate those funds to the Gender Sexuality Alliance in Milton. Instead, we sold T-shirts throughout the United States and around the world, sending shirts as far as New Zealand. And I am pleased to announce that as of this evening, we have raised almost $35,000 in large part due to the generosity and support of our Milton community. Thank you. Our goal in all of this was to own the insulting name and turn it into a rallying cry against bullying in Milton and beyond. So far, so good. So without further ado, I am here this evening to present to our school committee, our schools and our students on behalf of Lee Michael and I and our son Simon. $2,500 to the Pierce Gender Sexuality Alliance. $2,500 to the Milton High School Gender Sexuality Alliance. And the balance of the funds raised, almost $30,000 to Milton High School in the form of a scholarship fund. The scholarship will be awarded annually to a student that will enter post-high school education. A two-year or four-year school, including trade schools, that has worked to eliminate bullying in our school and in our society. We are grateful again to Milton for its support. The scholarship fund is still accepting donations at www.iamichellefritzy.com. That said, the T-shirts are sold out. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Furs. I'm also sad to announce that we have lost some town employees, elected officials and friends since our last meeting in May. There are three announcements after which I'll ask for a moment of silence. First. Longtime town meeting member and town official Marvin A. Gordon passed away just a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Gordon was a member of the select board from 1986 to 1993 for seven years. He was a pardon me, 13 years. He was a school committee member from 1980 to 1986 for six years. He was a town meeting member. From 1979 to 2021 for 42 years. He was a member of the warrant committee, the town government study committee and the DPW yard study committee. As I think his rabbi said at his funeral, Marvin was truly a mensch. I'd also like to recognize now town meeting member Robbie Jane, who wishes to recognize the contributions of. Town meeting member David Jones, who passed away since our last meeting. Mr. Jane, you are recognized. J A I N Robbie Jane, J A I N. There you are, Mr. Jane. If you want mute, you should be good to go.
All right. Can you hear me?
Well, you can. Yes, thank you.
All right. Robbie Jane, town meeting member precinct one. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for taking these moments to reflect upon the loss of. Fellow town meeting member David Jones, precinct 10. David was a dear friend to me and I share these reflections on behalf. Of other town meeting members. I want to thank Amanda Sater, town meeting member precinct 10 for reaching out to moderator his in advance of tonight's meeting. David Jones died suddenly unexpectedly accidentally a few weeks ago, and many, many have been grappling with this loss. The loss of a husband, the loss of a son. The loss of a father to three, the loss of a friend, of a teacher and mentor. The loss of a neighbor, of a community member. And tonight we feel that loss palpably here at town meeting. So I wanted to share with others how David approached his responsibilities in serving our town. David was so excited when he was elected to serve as a member of town meeting. He approached his position with the same dedication and zeal that he applied to all his other areas of responsibilities. I remember before his first meeting, he asked me for advice on what was proper, so to speak, in terms of participation. And I shared with him what I knew from my years as a town meeting member. For that first meeting, there was an item on the warrant about COVID numbers and testing. And David came prepared to share relevant data on case numbers and testing from other towns. His wife Sarah was telling me how he spent hours digging into other towns websites to gather data to present to town meeting, which he did very eloquently. I quickly realized he didn't need any advice or guidance from me. David only experienced town meeting in this virtual format. And I know we all look forward to being together again in person. I joked to David that when that happened, when we got back to the high school auditorium, I'd show him where the cool kids sat. David Jones cared so much for others, cared so much for the well-being of our town and for our community. I've seen some people share on Facebook that they feel inspired by David to run for open town meeting spots in future elections. And I think that's a great living legacy to him. Thank you, Mr. Moderator for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jane. I've also been informed that our town mechanic, Dave Evans, passed away this week. Dave was a longtime town employee and a graduate of our own Blue Hills Tech. So with that, I'd ask the members to join me in a moment of silence for these departed employees, elected officials and friends. Thank you for that. And thank you for their service to our town. I have a brief announcement here submitted by Catherine Levesque, who is the chair of the Milton Cultural Council. The Milton Cultural Council grant application deadline has been extended. The Milton Cultural Council is the local granting arm of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. The Milton Cultural Council allocates state funding to Milton artists, organizations and cultural projects which benefit the community of Milton. The council is accepting applications for the current grant cycle through November 1, 2021. All are invited to apply and innovative projects are highly encouraged to do so. Funds can be used for a variety of purposes and are awarded on a reimbursement basis. The council invites Milton residents to share ideas and feedback with the council through the community input survey. Their survey will support the drafting of grant priorities for the next fiscal cycle. More information can be found at massculturalcouncil.org-local-council/milton. And through the Milton Cultural Council Facebook page. Just to help you out, I'll post this announcement to the town meeting page after the meeting so members can see it. We have one more announcement. I'd like to recognize Christopher Hart. Mr. Hart, you have a brief announcement. And you're recognized. You should be able to unmute and we could should see you or at least hear you.
I think you can hear me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Chris Hart. I'm a town meeting member for precinct five. I'm also co-chair of the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee. Just a brief word on the committee, the advisory committee was created and its members were appointed by the select board in October of last year. The advisory committee has an 18-month charge to, to put it very simply, review and report on issues of diversity, equity and inclusion in the town. As part of that effort, the advisory committee has developed and is sponsoring a survey. With the support and assistance of the select board and the town administrator designed to capture. To capture the designed to capture the experiences and perspectives of adult town residents on diversity, equity and inclusion. The advisory committee will incorporate its analysis of the survey responses into its final report to the select board early next year. The survey has been open for a little over two weeks and in that time we've received around 500 responses, which represents about. Two and a half percent of the town's adult population. We're hoping to get as high response rate as possible so that we can capture as many views town residents as possible. And we need everybody's help to get there. We're holding the survey open through next Friday, November 5. It's available through the town of Milton website. It's also available and has been advertised on social media sites such as Milton Neighbors. Through the Milton Access website and Milton Times and is available in paper form at the clerk's office and council on aging. If you haven't taken the survey, please do. It only takes about five to 10 minutes and there's ample opportunity to express your viewpoints. Please also send the survey around to your networks and encourage others to take it. I hope you'll take it soon and tell your friends. Thank you very much for your attention and thank you, Mr. Moderator, very much for your courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We have a couple of folks on the phone who we have to identify. So town clerk Galvin, can you work to do so?
Yes, could the person with the last three digits O7O kindly announce their name? Again, the person with the last three digits of O7O. You can star six to unmute. I will re-announce that number at the end with the person with the number ending in 647. Please announce who you are again. Star six will unmute you.
Frank Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Desmond. And I have somebody that a number is not showing up. So your number must be blocked. If you could.
Madam Clerk, that's me, Sean Fallon, precinct six.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon.
Thank you.
And again, caller with the last three digits ending in O7O, please announce your name. Hit star six to unmute yourself. If you don't respond after this call, we will delete you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Next, we have a presentation by Mr. Sean O'Rourke. Mr. O'Rourke is the chair of the school building committee. He's going to present some slides and give us an update on the work of the committee since we last met in May. Mr. O'Rourke, you are recognized.
Good evening. Can you hear me, Miss?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the select board, members of the warrant committee. And my fellow town meeting members. My name is Sean O'Rourke. I'm the chair of the school building committee. And I wanted to give you an update tonight on kind of the progress we've made over the past year. If you go to the next slide, please. As some of you may be aware, we're comprised of nine members. We were formed in the spring of 2019. The five members at the top, including myself, were appointed by the town moderator. The bottom row is a mixture of school committee members and a select board appointees. If you go to the next slide, please. Perfect. So the main push or the main driver of this entire project that we've been doing is is our enrollment data. I kind of wanted to go over this a little bit with you to kind of. Bring you up to speed on kind of where we're at. So next slide, please. What you're seeing here is a display of our district enrollment from pre-K to fifth grade. I flipped the I flipped the graph around a little bit. Essentially, what you see is on the vertical axis is the enrollment years starting at 2007, 2008. Going all the way to the current. And as you go across the graph, it's a breakdown of the enrollments per grade, pre-K up to fifth grade. going all the way to the current, and as you go across the graph, it's a breakdown of the enrollments per grade, pre-K up to fifth grade. The yellow line that's there, the vertical line, is actually the capacity number of the four elementary schools at 1,900. So as you look at this graph, you can see after the first year, 2007, 2008, we eclipsed that line, and then slowly progressed up, and it's about a 2% increase every year of students that go through, and it's compounded as it goes up. As you can see, it goes all the way up to a maximum number of 2,396, right before the pandemic. As the pandemic hit, obviously, our enrollment numbers dropped to 2,258, but as we pulled the numbers back for this year, we're at 2,323, and that was in September. The numbers I just got today from the school department, since September, we've had additional 12 students in there, so that number's off a little bit. It should be 2,335. But we'll come back to this graph a couple times during this presentation. If you go to the next slide, please. So this enrollment crunch that we've been doing has been a driver for us, working with MSBA, which is the Mass School Building Authority. With Mass School Building Authority, they have the, a statement of interest that has to get submitted to them that they use to make the decision whether they fund or so they don't. Two of the priorities that we utilize, a priority two and four, which basically both deal with the overcrowding that we're experiencing. We've resubmitted it. We weren't selected last year, but we're expecting another decision, whether we get selected or not, this spring of 2022. Next slide. So part of this enrollment crunch that we've been having over enrollment that we, we've been experiencing has caused the district to kind of convert classrooms or spaces that were non-traditional spaces into classrooms. If you go to the next slide, please. So what you see here is kind of a floor plan. It's indicative across the entire district. What you're looking at here in blue is essentially the Collycock Cunningham Shared Library. That's kind of in the middle of the school. There's a little bit of additional space in pink that's in the upper right-hand corner. That wasn't part of the library, but it was just office space and stuff like that. If you go to the next slide, it'll kind of show you indicative of what's gone on over the past couple of years. The upper left corner is basically a computer room that was relocated from, I believe, Collycock up to there, and as you can see from the pictures, it's really squished. There's not a lot of space for the kids. The bottom left-hand corner just happened this year. They constructed a classroom in that bottom corner of the library, basically carving out about 500 square feet. As you can see, it's basically just office partitions that are there. There are no acoustic boundaries between the classroom and the library, so noise travels back and forth pretty easily, and doesn't really, it's not conducive of a classroom setting. In the bottom right-hand corner, what you see there is essentially a teacher's office that got carved in, again, using those same partitions. The desks that are in there are small. It doesn't really lend itself for a professional space for a teacher. And then on the top, we didn't have a picture of it, but that's essentially that room that was there before was converted back to a classroom. So the 3,500 square foot library you have now is down to 2,200 square feet, and we got a lot more kids in the school, so kind of, you know, this, like I said, this is indicative across the entire district. Everything internal to the buildings has been cannibalized, for lack of a better word. If you go to the next slide. So what does that leave for our next steps? Cannibalization of the exterior portions of the school, parking lots, playgrounds, and stuff like that. And there'll be modular classrooms that'll be going in. The capital program for the school is actually already planning some of these already. Go to the next slide, please. So as you're aware, the district architecture of our school system is built, built up of four elementary schools leading into a single middle school that feeds up to the high school, and the grade levels are shown there. Next slide, please. So previously, our role that we were pushing was to build a new elementary school, and there were a couple things that we started to notice with this. The biggest one is we'd have to redistrict, you know, by building a fifth elementary school. It requires to draw new boundaries and redistrict all the children. The other one that would come in is we'd be building a brand-new elementary school, and then we'd have four existing schools. So how will we build parity between them? And we were looking at it of what will we need to do to the existing four schools, kind of bring them back up? So we, after we didn't get selected last year, we kind of dove back in and started rethinking our process. If you go to the next slide, please. So back to the graph that we're looking at here. One thing that stood out to our committee was, you know, when we started looking at this about 2015, the fifth grade started eclipsing that, that vertical boundary of the capacity line. So what we thought about is, hey, can we strip the fifth grade out? And then if you go to the next slide, too, please. We also looked at, let's look at taking the pre-K out, and what that would do, and how, how could we do that? If you go to the next slide. Perfect, thank you. So on here, what we looked at is reconfiguring the grades around all the schools. So what we would be doing is stripping out from the elementary, the pre-K, and the fifth grade. That would leave four elementary schools, all with the existing districting, from kindergarten to fourth grade. They would feed up to the Pierce, where we've moved the fifth grade up to, and they would be mixed in with the sixth grade at the existing Pierce Middle School. And what we would be doing now, next, is constructing a new upper middle school or academy, you know, that would also have a pre-K wing on it. And what that is, is the land we found is at, is near the high school, or basically what I'm calling an educational campus at the high school. So it lends itself to kind of more of a new middle school at that location than it does an elementary school. Can you go to the next slide, please? So when you go back and we look at this graph again, like I said, we'd be looking at it a couple times. I wanted to see what it would look like when we stripped those numbers out. So if you go to the next slide, as we pulled the, the fifth grade out and the pre-K out of the existing schools, the numbers dropped down below that capacity line and kind of solved our problem graphically. But I wanted to see in the floor plans how this also got addressed. If you go to the next slide. Classroom reconversions, you know, a couple slides ago, we were talking about conversions of classrooms. If we go through this project that we proposed, it will basically free up a lot of classrooms that now we can reconvert back, but what, what were those numbers? If you go to the next slide, please. This moving the fifth grade up and the preschool out, it would, it would free up 16 classrooms that are currently in the school and eight preschool classrooms, which are a little bit larger. This allows the old rooms that were art rooms and music rooms to come back to kind of what their original designation was. Next slide, please. So what we did, too, is previously in 2019, DRA Architecture did a space study for us and gave us what our shortfalls were for a long-term, 10-year look, look ahead. The main one on there, we were 16 classrooms short. By converting those classrooms, like I just talked about, we, we addressed that, that right there. So we checked that box. We were four kindergarten classroom short. The previous slide, we had eight. So we're actually in excess of kindergarten classrooms. And what we can do is utilize those for the further art, music, and special ed classes that are listed below. So we basically checked all those boxes. The one thing to note, too, is those classrooms, or the 16 classrooms that were there, were based on grades one through five, and as I was saying, is in the elementary school, be grades one through four. So that, that number of 16 is actually a little high. It probably should be 14 or 15. So in short, we cover it all. If you go to the next slide, please. The next part, it was kind of my biggest charge personally, since our last meeting or presentation last year, was about site selection. If you go to the next slide. Currently, as some of you may, may be aware from the Milton Times articles, the, there's a section of conservation land south of Goult Road that we've been looking, identified as the location that we want to build the school. We're working with Town Council, and we're working with the Town Planner to work through the process to do this, and the first process is rectifying the record of deed, the registry deeds for that parcel land that was never recorded, which is in yellow. If you go to the next slide. What our, what our goal is, is to switch that conservation land to the other side of Goult Road, north of it, and on the south side, use that as a parcel of land to build the new school. Next slide. So as I was saying, that new middle school at the, near the high school would basically create what I was calling an educational campus. This is a recommendation that the School Building Committee has brought up to the School Committee. The final decision on this entire portion, or her decision on the school, lies with the School Committee, not the School Building Committee. Next slide, please. What we've tried to do, too, is DRA, who did all the school building project for us previously, we've engaged them to do some conceptual designs at that site to kind of show what it looks like, because with some of our meetings with neighbors and butters, they're asking what it's going to look like. So we're in the process of working with them to develop that. Next slide, please. And kind of leads right into our neighborhood engagement. If you go into our next slide, please. We've, I, I personally, and I'm open to meeting with anyone and everyone for this. I've had in-person informal, what I call coffee talks, and we've also had larger crowds of online Zoom neighborhood informational sessions, two of them, and what we tried to do is utilize some technology called Slido to ask questions, poll, and poll the audience and get feedback back. And what you see here is essentially word clouds for, we ask people what they think of a certain thing, they respond with the word, and the more votes the words get, the bigger it gets. So we're using this to kind of gauge our community engagement. Next slide, please. So our next steps is basically further public engagement. We want to work more with the neighborhoods on the site selection, understand their concerns, and then also engage with some of the parents and decision-makers for the decision between the elementary school or new middle school. The second thing that I'm working with is specifically with Town Council is an article for Town Meeting for that conservation swap of the land following out our Article 97. The third thing, again, as our kind of process is going for domino effect, School Committee decision. We're going to need, within the next year, for the School Committee to make a decision on that new middle school idea or an elementary school, to give some direction. And then finally, by next spring, work with MSBA to hopefully get selected. Next slide. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Very thorough. Pardon me. Let me get my video back on. I thought his content was relevant to the Town Meeting Members, given the significant amount of work of the committee and the, the big impact on the town. With that, our preliminaries are complete. We will proceed to Article One. Just a brief note, we have seven articles tonight. I'm assured that Article Seven, we may be able to dispose of quickly, so there's an opportunity to complete this Town Meeting in one night, but that's up to you members, since you control the content. So with Article One, I'm not, unless I see an objection in the chat session, I'm just going to read a few phrases from the articles, you can get the idea. "It's recommended that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase the property located at 41 Wharf Street, Milton, and to authorize the Select Board to grant and accept all easements necessary to develop said property and to take all other actions necessary to complete this acquisition. That the town appropriate an amount not to exceed $1 to pay cost of this acquisition, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that the Select Board is authorized to accept grants or gifts from any other public or private funding source relating to this appropriation." With that, I'd like to recognize Chair of the Select Board Katie Conlon, who's going to introduce this article to you. Ms. Conlon, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Katie Conlon, Chair of the Select Board and Town Meeting Member from Precinct Three. We're going to put up on the screen a map of the area, so that we can show Town Meeting Members the parcel that we're talking about. So while that's being put up, I'll just mention, okay, here's our, here is our map. Hopefully, everyone can see this on the screen. The parcel we're talking about is shown in the red dotted area. "The Select Board seeks Town Meeting's authorization to acquire phenomenal consideration, $1, a parcel of land at 41 Wharf Street, consisting of approximately 37,000 square feet." This is a little bit less than an acre. "41 Wharf Street is currently owned by the Milton Landing Condominium Association, which is the association for the residents and the business owners at 88 Wharf Street. The town has two permanent easements over the property, and for many years, the association has granted the town a temporary easement for water-dependent activities over the portion that is currently used for boat storage. That temporary easement will expire on December 31, 2021. The Select Board recently entered into a memorandum of agreement with the association that contemplates the transfer of the property to the town with this board's authorization and also with the approval of 75% of the unit owners of Condominium Association." So you can see, to the right of the red dotted line is a parcel that's Captain's Landing, 44 Wharf Street. That parcel is owned by the town. Below the, or to the left of the red dotted line is 25 Wharf Street, which is the old police lockup building that's been used by the Yacht Club for approximately 100 years in the parking lot. And of course, the large parcel to the left of that is the 88 Wharf building, which is largely residential condominiums with some ground floor commercial space. This entire property at Wharf Street has been a working waterfront since at least the late 1880s. It has been used for industrial, commercial, and residential purposes. For decades, much of 41 Wharf has been covered with an asphalt parking lot and used for boat storage and maintenance. The area looks like it's not covered with the pavement. It's, is a hillside. It is an incline there that there are trees on at the back of the 41 Wharf in the map. When the condo association offered the property to the town, the board conducted some due diligence. In August of 2020, Beta Group Inc. completed a Phase One environmental assessment for the property for the Select Board. That report concluded that the property is a potential site of recognized environmental conditions because it has been used for maintenance and repair of boats, including changing oil, stripping paint, and painting of boats. What we do not know is whether these types of activities were conducted before the property was paved. Therefore, Beta concluded that, quote, "Without further inquiry, the presence of surficial soil contamination from incidents village and/or amassed DEP reporting condition cannot be ruled out," unquote. The Select Board requested that the association conduct a Phase Two environmental site assessment. That would have required soil borings and cost substantially more money than the Phase One report did. The association declined to undertake a Phase Two, but did offer to pay the town $75,000 over five years. The Select Board's intent would be to deposit those funds into a segregated account to be used to mitigate any potential future environmental liability. But nothing in our MOA relieves any party from potential environmental liability. It's unlikely that this property would be developed and would require pavement and soil to be disturbed. The waterfront is in a flood zone, and 41 Wharf Street has flooded during some northeasters and other storms. In recent years, the discussion around this property's future has centered on water-dependent activities, including boat and shell storage. So why should the town acquire this property? As many Town Meeting Members know, the Master Plan Implementation Committee undertook a multi-year study of Milton Village with the assistance of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, a regional planning organization to which Milton belongs. In part, that effort resulted in Town Meeting's approval in 2020 of a mixed-use overlay zoning for Milton Village. But it began with an assessment of waterfront recreational access, and specifically ways to increase public access to the Naponton River for kayakers, canoeists, the Milton High School crew team, the adult crew, known as the Masters Crew, pedestrians, bird watchers, and families who simply want to come to the waterfront to enjoy a picnic by the water or to watch the boats or watch the crew team and enjoy the natural resources in this area. One of the top 20 key recommendations of Milton's 2015 master plan is, quote, "To increase access to the Naponton River and enhance the sense of being on the water, encourage more kayaking and canoeing," unquote. Acquisition of 41 Wharf Street will put the town in a better position to make this goal a reality. The Select Board issued a request for proposals for 25 Wharf Street some time back. That is the parcel that houses the town-owned building that is rented by the Milton Yacht Club. We were not able to include 41 Wharf Street in that RFP, because the property is owned by the association, the association, and the town only has easements, one of them temporary, over that property. We received only one bid for 25 Wharf Street, which was from the Yacht Club, and we voted to reject that bid. If we acquire 41 Wharf Street, the board could combine the properties and issue an RFP for a larger town-owned property that hopefully will generate significant interest. It's important to note that this parcel is uniquely situated, because it's surrounded by the other parcels that the town owns, including, as I mentioned, Captain's Landing, 25 Wharf Street, and nearby that grassy area to the left on Wharf Street, behind the Masonic Building, which is where the farmer's market operates. So it makes good sense for the town to acquire the property. The condo association currently pays taxes on this parcel. So if it's given to the town, that would disappear. However, the association does not really make use of the parcel, even though it owns it, because the easements that have been given to the town. Have really been what has governed the use of this property. What are the next steps? The MOA is conditioned upon approval by both town meeting and seventy five percent of the unit owners of the condo association. In addition, the assoc, the association is going to have to seek modification of two permits. This parcel at forty one Wharf Street is subject to requirements of both a special permit that has been issued by the planning board for the mixed use development. At eighty eight Wharf Street, following the hood fire. And a special waterways license granted by the Massachusetts DEP. It is a condition to the transfer of the property in the MOU. And the association's payment to the town that both of these permits be modified. Our agreement requires the select board to support the association's efforts to modify these two permits in order to eliminate. The association's obligations to maintain the property and the public access, access elements of other property owned by the town at twenty five Wharf Street. In closing, on behalf of the select board, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of many people whose efforts over the past years have brought us to this point. The master plan implementation committee chaired by Chair L. Togias. And members Dick Burke, Taber Keely, and Liz Miller, and now Arthur Doyle. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The select board's own Milton Landing Committee chaired by Richard Wells and members Ted Carroll, Michael Dennehy, Bill Ritchie, Dick Burke, Allison Quinn, and Tim Zerwinski. Our town council Kevin Freitag. The Milton Landing Condominium Association and its council Ned Corcoran. And the warrant committee, who has recommended in favor of this article. The select board unanimously supports the recommendation of the warrant committee, and we will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon. Before we open up for questions, just two notes. A town meeting member, pardon me, a, a registered voter from precinct six, Mr. Norman Nowinski. Who's a trustee of eighty eight Wharf. Asked and was granted permission to participate tonight in case the select board wishes to ask any questions of him. And also Mr. Ned Corcoran, who longtime town meeting members will recognize, although Mr. Corcoran has moved out of town. The request to select board, the moderator has also granted Mr. Corcoran access to town meeting, not as a voter, but just as a panelist. In case they wish to direct any questions toward him. So with that, does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Again, remember, click the raise hand button on your panel and we will proceed. I see we have one. Ms. Cheryl Togias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Cheryl Togias, Precinct Nine. And as Chair Conlon noted, I am the Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I have prepared comments that largely were covered by Chair Conlon. But I do want to, to note that many residents in town are unaware of what a beautiful asset this is to our community. Many don't see past the storage of crates and cradles and trailers and boats that are often. On this portion of the property. I spent a significant time exploring this area when our committee was working on this. And truly think that if residents are given an opportunity. To take advantage of this, they will too find it as beautiful as many have. And so with that, I would like to say that this acquisition is a furtherance of the planning work. And of our committee's recommendations, and I would therefore encourage a yes vote on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Togias. Next, we have Jill Clark. Ms. Clark, you're recognized. If you can remember to per custom, state your precinct.
Good evening, Jill Clark, Precinct Four. Is the possibility of the Lower Naponton River being declared a superfund site. Likely to limit access to this parcel in the future?
Ms. Conlon, do you have that answer?
Mr. Moderator, no, we don't believe that will limit access at all. That would only enhance the riverfront. For this site and for the other parts of the riverfront and along Milton, along Truman Highway in the Baker Mills area.
Okay, thank you. I see Mr. McCurdy, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Walker, Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized. If you can unmute, Mr. McCurdy, you should be good to go. You're still muted, Mr. McCurdy, on your end. Okay, why don't you work on that and we'll come back. I'll recognize you. There you are, Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, sorry. In this, in some Steve McCurdy from precinct seven. And in a similar vein with that, that superfund or potential superfund fight site, would any of the work be in this area that they might have to disrupt the paved surface? And open up a whole can of worms there.
Thank you, Ms. Collins.
Mr. Moderator, the, the work would not be in this area. The work would be up near the, the dam at, at the Baker Chocolate Mills and further up the river in the opposite direction. So it would not impact this area, but dredging is an air, is an issue that's been discussed for this area that we'd like to see happen eventually.
Mr. McCurdy, okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Brian Kelly, you're recognized.
Yes, Brian Kelly, Precinct Seven. I, I have a question. I'm hearing things that there's not, doesn't seem to be a lot of access to the public down there. Every time I've gone down there, I haven't had a problem. And, and then I'm, I'm hearing that by owning this property, we probably wouldn't do anything with it. But if we included it with the yacht club building, we could probably get more money for it. So I'd like to know how we would get more money for it. Would it be because we would remove the boat storage and put parking there for a company perhaps? Is that the intention? And, and who says that looking at cars is better than looking at boats? And I get a sense that the, the town doesn't, the select board is not happy with the yacht club. And after a hundred years of being there that the. That's what I'm just curious about is what is the intent regarding the yacht club?
Thank you. With that, Ms. Conlon, can you answer those questions or direct to people who can?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, that, the, as I said, the plan would be for the town to put the property out to bid, to see what the market would bring. And hopefully there would be interest in this property by the yacht club and by others. The yacht club is currently a month to month tenant. Several years ago, the board and the park commissioners, which were parties to the lease with the yacht club, allowed the yacht club lease to expire and to go on a month to month basis. And unfortunately, it's continued longer than anyone had planned at that time, but we wanted to go through the master plan process. And have that planning. Body and eventually MAPC come in and take a look at what could be done here and how we could better make use of this property. We have heard from quite a number of people over the years that. Many residents are not familiar with the river fund. It's, it's not, it's a small river fund. It's not anywhere near as big as other communities' waterfronts are, but it. It is a nice area and it could be enjoyed by residents and there have been some expressions of. Interest in making better and more use out of it by more people in town over the years. So we've, we've heard that from quite a few people, but. Everyone has their own experiences to whether they've taken advantage of this resource or not, but the, the plan would be to put the property out to bid.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kelly, you okay? You're back on mute, so I assume you are.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
I have to report, I see a Mr. Edward Dow, whose hand is raised. Mr. Dow, the town clerk tells me. You are not a registered town meeting member, and I'm sorry, we can't recognize you unless you've cleared your active voter registration status. So. I'm going to ask that our Zoom host remove you from the attendee pool because the attendee pool is reserved for town meeting members. Who can vote and anyone in that pool is able to vote. So. Mr. Dow, if you want to text one of your representatives and they could answer whatever question you may have. Then, or you could text. Me, Artis, or rather send me an email, artist@townofmilton.org, and we can try to see if we can get your question answered. With that, I'll go to Amy Robbins, who looks like the last hand that is raised. Ms. Robbins, you're recognized.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Robbins. I'm precinct six. I am a, a member of the Masters Crew Team, so I know this area very well, and I'm really excited about the potential improvement in this area. I just, I had asked some questions earlier today regarding the potential for. Liability to the town regarding. Any kind of toxic issue that may emerge there from any kind of, any kind of work that could disturb. The, the pavement of the concrete there. Or, or even I think the superfund, the potential for that superfund cleanup to, to come down river. But what I'm, what I'm hoping I'm hearing and just wanted to clarify that I am hearing is that. Based on the, on the planned uses of the site, we don't expect that the town would. Have any additional liability by acquiring this site. Is that accurate? Is that, am I understanding that right?
Ms. Conlon, I'll hand that back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So no one knows whether there's any potential. No one knows whether there's any definite environmental contamination. The phase one was inconclusive because we did not do any soil borings. And go to the next step, but we've noted that. This is a property that for a couple of hundred years has had some industrial and commercial as well as residential uses. It's been used by the yacht club for a century. There's been boat painting and storage and oil changing at the site. The town owns properties right next to it, so. So the, the, the. There's potential liability, but there's nothing known or definite at this time, and we're not planning. There's no discussion or any planning to do any digging and excavating any soil at the site. So whatever liability there may be, there may be, the MOU doesn't relieve anybody from liability. And I think that's really all that we can say at this time is that. Is what the current plans are, what the adjoining properties are and what the history of the site has been. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Robbins?
Yes, thank you. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
I see two more hands, Brian O'Halloran and Karen Freeman Hannah. Mr. Howland, you're recognized.
There you go.
Mr. Moderator, Brian O'Halloran here, Precinct Three.
If you could speak, maybe get a little closer to the mic, you're a little faint, sir.
Yes, hi. Is that any better?
That is better, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Moderator. Question. Brian O'Halloran, Precinct Three. What's the impact of tax revenue on if, if article one is implemented?
Thank you. Ms. Conlon?
Mr. Moderator, the association currently pays approximately thirteen thousand dollars a year. And for the next five years would be paying fifteen thousand dollars into a fund for the town. So that is somewhat approximates the tax revenue, but that is only for a five year period.
Mr. Howland, did that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Freeman Hannah, you're recognized.
Hi, Karen Friedman Hannah, Precinct Two. I, I just need a little bit of clarification. Is the intention of this for it to be kept as open space? For town access and use for townspeople to be able to access the water and whatever? Or is the intention to? I, I guess I'm not sure what put it out to bid means. If there is potential then that it's going to be developed in some way where a structure or some other type of use that would limit. Town access. So can you clarify that, please? I, I, I'm a little bit confused.
Ms. Conlon, can you help us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, the property is in a flood zone, so this not going to be, there's no contemplation of any large building structure at this site. There, there's been some discussion in recent years that perhaps boat storage or crew storage for the shells might make sense there, or maybe a kiosk. If there were another bidder who were interested in some kind of a kiosk for canoe operations, but nothing. Con, nothing is contemplated at this time that would involve digging the soil, removing the asphalt pavement. And constructing a structure there largely because it is in the flood zone. So the, the idea is that it probably would remain. Largely open, but we would combine it with twenty five Wharf Street and put it out to bid and see what interest the market might have. And the flood zone status would probably be an issue for any potential bidder. I hope that clarifies.
Yes.
But what our intent is.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I thought we were done. We have one more hand. Andrew DeMato, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Andrew DeMato, Precinct Seven. How does this affect the current status of the yacht club? Should they not be able to afford to. Purchase this? Is this the end of the yacht club?
Ms. Conlon, can you answer that one?
Mr. Moderator, so we have to go back out to bid for the yacht club property. That lease has expired. It's been expired for several years. It had been, I believe, a ten year lease. So that property has to go back out to bid by law. And the yacht club is interested in, in, as going back, putting that back out to bid. So it. It's not going to affect the yacht club in an, in an adverse way. We have to go out to bid in any event.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and Mr. DeMato. And Ms. Freeman Hannah, your hand is still up and no one else has raised. Do you have a follow up or is that just an echo hand? I see your hand is down. Now it's back up. And that looks like all the speakers. Very good. If we can start moving the panelists over, I'll just explain. Takes a few minutes for us to move some town meeting members who are in our panelist pool over to the attendee pool. And so I'll get a nod from our host and we can do that. By the way, this, we are now voting on whether to authorize, approve article, the motion in article one. This requires a two thirds vote, which I'll be announcing at the conclusion. And we'll put up the poll in just a moment. Some members have put in the chat, if we can summarize the articles, what we're doing is, would you see the text in bold? We are voting on the text you see in bold unless it has been amended by town meeting. This has not been amended. So what you're voting on now is whether to approve the, the town's purchase of this piece of land as recommended in the bold text. And I'm told that we're good to go, so we can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, signify by voting no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And if we can unmute the phones. All those in the phones in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we can mute. We can close the poll. And put up the results. The article carries with eighty nine percent yes, ten percent no, and one percent abstained, so I declare a two thirds vote. Thank you very much. We'll proceed to article two. On page eleven, recommended that the town vote to amend chapter twenty one of the general bylaws known as the stormwater management bylaw in section seven by deleting the following text in quotes. A special assessment against the property owner and shall constitute a lien of the owner's property for the amount of said costs, end quote. And replacing it with the following text, quote, the amount of said costs shall constitute a lien against subject property for the purposes of general law, chapter forty, paragraph fifty eight, end quote. We don't have any speakers for this. We'll just ask if any members wish to speak to the, or speak to this or have any questions. Please signify by clicking the raise hand button. I am seeing no hands. So with that, we'll take a moment to move the panelists over. And then proceed to a vote. vote. Very good. If you'll put up the poll, we're now voting on Article Two in the bold text. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, signify by voting no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we can unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you, we can mute the phones. And if we can put, close the poll and put up the results, please. The motion carries with yes 96%, no 2%, and 1% abstain. So Article Two is, carries. We'll proceed to Article Three. Recommended that the town vote to appropriate $350,000 from the Public Educational Government Peg Access and Cable Related Fund for the purpose of designing, building, and deploying a town-owned fiber optic network, INET, to support public educational or governmental access cable television services and to serve town departments, schools, and public safety agencies. A few things, we'll have a presentation first from Mike Zulus of the Select Board, and also the Municipal Broadband Committee. Also, we will have with us tonight, there's two citizens who wish to speak, and we'll, we'll do that after we get the presentation, Mr. Philip Joe Henning and Ms. Rosemary Cochran have both asked permission and been confirmed by the town clerks as registered voters. We will get to them along with the town meeting members. Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, precinct three, town meeting member, member of the Select Board and Chair of the Municipal Broadband Committee. The article, Article Three, tonight requests an appropriation from the Public Educational Governmental and Access and Cable Related Fund. And I will, in a brief fashion, walk you through the essence of the, what the fund is and what the request is for. Lynn, could we have the next slide, please? First, the members of the committee, hard-working committee, put in a lot of time and effort, Joseph Chamberlain, Mark Day, Rob Lynch, John Sullivan, and myself. Next slide, please, Lynn. The reason we're here, the request, is to seek town meeting appropriation for $350,000 from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund. That's the request in Article Three. After that, the committee will seek Select Board appropriation for $950,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds. And finally, the next step after that will be able to, will be to issue a request for proposal for design and construction of a new INET. And I'm just about to tell you what an INET is. Next slide, please. So here's the need. The INET is the fiber optic network that connects all the town and school buildings and is used for the Milton Public Educational and Governmental Access Programming, MPEG, the Local Access TV. It serves our town departments, schools, public safety, and it serves MPEG. The existing network is owned by Comcast. It's at least 19 years old. It is a six-strand fiber network. It has no redundancy and no room for expansion. The town and the schools tell us that they need 36, at a, at a minimum, 36 fiber strands for expanded public safety and other needs, and additional fiber strands for expanded school purposes, including voice and data and, and video and potential bandwidth to improve remote learning if that's needed in the future. MPEG tells us that they need fiber strands, more fiber strands to broadcast from more locations and to do so with better quality. The IT Committee and its chair, Kyoko Amosa, recommend, will be recommending IOT sensors, and I hope I pronounced that correctly. These sensors apparently will be recommended to track, manage, and maintain key town assets such as HVAC systems, police fire engines, and other town vehicles, leak detection, and other, other aspects of town assets. And they are recommending that we'll need more bandwidth for that. The current, the current use of the Comcast network, under that current use and the current agreement with Comcast, Comcast is not obligated, obligated to expand the INET, to replace the INET, or in any way compensate the town for the INET should the fiber that comprises the INET reach its end of useful life. Next slide, please. Now, the opportunity. The opportunity that has been identified in what is called the CTC report, you'll see that site throughout the presentation. The CTC report is a, a report that was provided to the town by Columbia Telecommunications Corporation, an engineering and business consulting firm. The town commissioned a, that study back in 2019, and CTC came up with a design and cost estimate for a town INET. So CTC identified the possibility of a fiber network that would be, that would be completely under the town's control, so the town could add additional, additional needs to that network. Now, the opportunity rests with the potential funding. The American Rescue Plan Act provides funding for three types of infrastructure investments, water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. That combined with the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund, which can be used to support Peg Access cable television services, give us the opportunity to reach the goal of building a town-owned fiber optic network without using local taxpayer funds. Next slide, please. This is a little bit of background of the current INET. There are six strands of fiber. There's no redundancy. It is used for internet access, phones, police and fire emergency radio, street cameras. Our current, current maintenance and support agreement with Comcast ends July 30, 2024. At that time, either party could terminate with 60 days' notice. We have the right, the town has the right to terminate the agreement after April of next year upon 90 days' written notice. But the key here is that Comcast is not obligated to do anything with respect to the sign that should it reach end of useful life. And if it doesn't reach end, end of useful life, Comcast, according to our agreement, will have no further obligation to maintain and operate the INET. Next slide, please. The proposed new INET. CTC recommends a 288-strand fiber optic network that would have the capacity to connect all sites with low-cost electronics and leave the capacity for future use. The reason they recommend 288 strands is the relatively low cost of material cost of additional strands makes it prudent to install that, that, that size of a cable. And this network would support current and future technologies, including smart city applications and enhanced first responder connectivity. Again, to repeat, the additional key uses would be more locations and better quality for MPEG, expanded public safety and school services. And here's a key redundancy at all locations to eliminate a single point of contact, single point of failure in the network. How would we maintain and support the network in the future? We would, we would commission a third-party vendor to provide maintenance and support, and I'll lay out the cost for you in a few slides. And, but there would be no additional town employees for that maintenance and support. Next slide, please. This is the network that, that we would build, and this shows the connection of the different town sites, where there would be INET sites, and how they connect, they connect with aerial, primarily aerial, primarily up on the poles, aerial, aerial conduits. And you'll see in there in the blue, which are the optional routes for redundancy, which we strongly recommend and is strongly recommended to us by the IT professionals. Next slide, please.
Mrs. Zulus, three minutes if you can, because Mr. O'Rourke's at a high bar of 28 slides in 12 minutes, so.
All right. Let me, let me, let me start to move.
Buy us to the challenge.
All right, let me, let me move quickly. I'm going slower than I thought. Very quickly, the key differences, the fiber strands, six versus 288, redundancy, none versus full, expansion, none, currently unlimited, and a new INET control. Currently Comcast is in control, they decide. If we have our own INET, we can decide what to do with it, and, and we also have the possibility of revenue to the town. Next slide, please. Construction costs. CTC came up with a, a range of potential costs between 802,000 and 982,000 back in 2019. They have told us that, just recently, that we should plan for a 25% contingency in addition to that amount based on inflation and COVID market pressures. And so our high cost, or the worst-case estimate for construction of a new fiber optic network would be $1.3 million. Next slide, please. Here are the possibilities for funding. Again, the American Rescue Plan, American Rescue Plan Act, Milton currently has allocated towards a 208, $2.8 million directly and $5.5 million through the county. And the Peg Access Fund, there was a balance of $741,000 as of 6/30/21. That's the most current that we use because there are, there is, there are additional monies in that fund since that date, but they have, those funds, some of those funds have to be, so have to be moved over to MPEG as part of our agreement. So the most conservative number of what's that in that fund is $741,000. Bonding is not what we're talking about tonight because we don't see that as a need under this opportunity. Next slide, please. Again, American Rescue Plan Act, the three, three, three infrastructure, three infrastructure uses, water, sewer, and broadband. Next slide, please. The Peg Access Fund, this is what we're asking you to allocate funds from. This was created by town meeting. It is funded by a portion of the Comcast fees that are paid to the town. And the fund provides, among the, the applicable uses are, are support of public educational governmental access cable television. The design of this INET will support MPEG cable television services with more broadcast locations and better quality. Town Council has vetted this proposal, this proposed appropriation with the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue. Next slide, please. Now, we did hear from Comcast after we made this proposal. Initially, they took the view that this, that this was not an appropriate appropriation. They didn't want us to use this money for this purpose, and they asked to meet with us. So we met with them, and at that meeting, and after that meeting, they stated that they were all set and that no further follow-up was needed from the town. Next slide, please. Estimated annual expenses. When CTC developed their high-level report in 2019, they had annual, potential annual expenses at about $108,000. We dug into that amount. Our insurance amount is much less because, according to our insurance, our insurer, that is a high estimate of $7,400 is a high estimate. And the contingency number that they had in there, we already have a reserve fund, and so they've told us, CTC has told us, that if we have a reserve fund, then we can take care of any contingency from our reserve fund. And finally, GIS for support, we already have this. We already have a GIS expert who tells us he doesn't believe additional support is needed. So the, the amounts, the, the updated amount of annual expense would be 24,400. We currently pay Comcast $12,000 a year for this, and so our increase of 12,400 would be 1/100 of 1% of the annual town budget. Next slide, please. Potential revenue. The CTC report pointed out that the excess strands in this 288-strand network could be used to lease, could be leased to businesses who need enterprise-grade services or private providers. And CTC pointed out those potential anchor institutions that could, could provide, could be customers for the town in this network. Finally, two slides, Mr. Moderator. The need meets the opportunity. Our request and our recommendation is to replace the town's INET infrastructure now using the ARPA funds in the cable-related fund at no cost to the taxpayer. What do we get for this? We get to control our own destiny for connectivity and bandwidth needs now and in the future without relying on Comcast. And as CTC pointed out, what we seek to create without a cost to the taxpayer is a future-proof network where we can decide what additional needs we want to meet with that network, and it would not be a matter of replacing the cable. It would simply be a matter of replacing the hardware on each end. Next slide, please. Finally, back to where we were at the beginning, we seek this appropriation tonight. This is supported by the MPEG Executive Director. It's supported by the IT professionals for the town and the school. It's supported by the Chair of the IT Committee. It's supported by the Warrant Committee, and it's supported by the Select Board, and we'd appreciate your support tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. With that, we'll go to the members, and for the citizens, I'll alternate between first member and citizen, and we'll start with Mr. Leroy Walker. Sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, town meeting member, precinct 10. I rise in support of this article. The question is with regard to funding, and it, it may have to do with how the ARPA funds are being allocated, but my question is, if we got 2.8 million in ARPA funds, why wouldn't we fund the entire amount from the ARPA funds and preserve the balance in the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Conlon, as Select Board Chair, do you want to take these questions or defer to Mr. Zulus to answer details?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask Mr. Zulus to respond to these questions. His committee is the most familiar with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Walker. We, we thought that this mix was appropriate. The cable-related fund is, the, the needs of MPEG under the cable-related fund have been largely satisfied. We believe, and there are ongoing projects that are already being funded, and it is our view that leaving $400,000 in the cable-related fund leaves it well-capitalized. And in fact, to use, to leave $750,000 in that fund would be really to, to not use those funds appropriately. And so, so it was our view that we should, it was, it was better to have a mix between the cable-related fund and ARPA because of the different, differing needs here. And frankly, there are other needs under ARPA, and so we thought that this was a good balance between the use of the cable fund and the use of the, the ARPA funds.
Just one follow-on. So that sounds fine. I, I'm assuming that the town has a plan to ensure that it doesn't leave any ARPA funds on the table which are time-bound. Is that correct?
So, so this is, so the, the process for the ARPA funds, which need to be expended by December 31, 2024, the process is, requests and opportunities are being reviewed by the Finance Committee of the Select Board. We've, we're committed to having public sessions. We've had one public session already to get to solicit citizen input, and that will be an ongoing process as we get additional ARPA funds in and allocated to the town over the next year. We have, we, we had an initial allocation of $1.4 million. The second allocation of $1.4 million may come sometime next year. We, we expect to get an allocation of, I think, $1.3 million from the county sometime in the next month or so, and, and then those amounts will be, will be allocated to Milton over the next year or so. And so, and so the answer, the direct answer, Leroy is, Mr. Walker, is that there is no fixed plan as yet, that it is an ongoing process. The Select Board is soliciting resident feedback. The Select Board is reviewing proposals from, or will be reviewing proposals from town departments, and, and ultimately, the Select Board will make the, make the decision on the allocation of those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Zulus.
Thank you. I'll now go to one of our citizens, Mr. Philip Joe Henning. So Mr. Joe Henning, if you could unmute yourself, just state your name and address for the audience. If you could, I know you've spoken to this body before, if you could focus your comments for the scope of the article and limit your content to 10 minutes. And Mr. Joe Henning, you're recognized.
My name is Phil Joe Henning. I live at 23 Parkwood Drive in precinct nine. I noticed that Comcast provided services over many years to the town, broadband services to the town over many years for a very reasonable price. Now, I understand that INET is, let's say, dead, and I understand that there might be a cost increase to continue with Comcast. Nevertheless, I thought it would make sense for the broadband committee to reach out to Comcast, Verizon, RCN, and see what. to Comcast, Verizon, RCN, and see what they would charge the town for the new services that are being expected. So I did a public records request and I asked for the request for quote that had been sent to Comcast, Verizon, RCN, and any other broadband provider. And I didn't receive anything. So my conclusion is that there was no request for quote done. That Comcast, Verizon, RCN, et cetera, did not have the opportunity to quote on the full array of town services that were required. Now, this INET provided service to the schools, adequate service to the schools during the pandemic when students were staying at home. And it provided a good level of service. So I'm not exactly sure why we would try to create something new with which we have no experience when we have really good providers who have technology, have the resources to upgrade equipment as is necessary. Additionally, I don't understand, it may be, let's say, free because ARPA funds are available now, but as equipment needs to be replaced over time, what is the useful life of this equipment? And to what extent would taxpayers be on the hook to replace this equipment as it becomes obsolete? The nice thing about Comcast is that they have resources, they have expertise, they have a service organization in place. At my own company, the company where I work, we use both Verizon and Comcast. And we switch between the two as a switch becomes necessary. If one is out of service, we switch to the other. We use it for broadband and we use it for phone. We pay market rates for those services. But the cost, in my mind, is very reasonable. It's not 12,000 like the town was paying, but it is very reasonable. Because we have both Verizon and Comcast, it's incredibly reliable. And again, it switches for cost reasons and service reasons. So I guess I would not endeavor to get into a business with which we're really not familiar when we have very good commercial providers. At least, we should ask for a quote before we think about spending up to 1.3 million on a project that we're not really prepared for, in my mind. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I thought your comments were well said and on point. I heard too, just to confirm whether there was a request for quote, and you had a question, what's the useful life of this equipment and would the town be on the hook for the replacement? Mr. Zulus, can you address those two for us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With respect to a request for proposal, a request for quote, it's premature to do that before we have funds allocated. When we put out a request for proposal, anyone can respond to that, including Comcast. The reality is, under their current agreement with us, they have no obligation to upgrade anything, to expand anything, or to do anything further. But if this is, if this is approved by town meeting, anyone can respond to a request for proposal. And if they do that, that's fine. Useful life, my understanding of the useful life would be 30 to 40 years. That's the, that's the, that's what I understand that to be. As for, there was an issue, there was a question raised about resources and expertise of Comcast. They may have resources and expertise, but they will charge us for those, any resources and expertise. We don't, anything beyond what we currently have, which is insufficient, will cost the town. And we won't own it if it costs the town. And then finally, there was an issue about getting into a business. This is not getting into a business. This is just building a cable. It's just a cable to connect us. It's just a network, a cable that we'll control. As for maintenance and service, that's, those are the costs that I mentioned before. You would hire a third-party vendor. Comcast could be that third-party vendor when we put that out for a request for a proposal. But we would hire a third-party vendor. And the, and the estimate from CTC for that is that it would be 12,400 more than we currently pay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulus. I see only two hands. We'll go to Mr. Hein first, then we'll go to a citizen. Mr. Hein, you're recognized. There, Mr. Hein, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening, Doug Hein, Precinct 2, Town Meeting Member. I rise in strong support of this article. I had the chance to listen to a few meetings concerning this topic in the last few months. And I think it's really kind of a no-brainer from a standpoint that the federal money is out there and this relatively small investment from the PEG Access Fund is really instrumental in getting this I-network built. I know the last few comments were about not getting into the business of broadband, but I do want to touch upon that for a second, just from the standpoint that it's my understanding that if we were to build this I-net, it could really serve as the backbone for eventually, if the town so decided, to offer direct fiber municipal services, like a number of the towns that our neighbors do. Speaking from experience, I work in a business in Norwood, and they have municipal broadband. And I got to tell you, the service is unbelievable. If I have an issue, I can call or get the cellphone of a customer service person. And I contrast that with some of the experiences that I've had with Comcast, and it's night and day. So I did, I had a question that if, if we were to utilize these funds and put together an I-net, could then, if the town decided, and if we did want to quote-unquote "get into the business of offering citizens of the town low-cost, high-quality, and fast, cheap internet access," is that something that, laying the groundwork? Is it something that we'd be able to do once the hardware is actually installed?
Thank you, Mr. Hein. Mr. Zulus, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the answer is yes. This could be a backbone for this if the, if the town decided it wanted to go in that direction. I did want to add one thing that one of the, one of the, one of the commenters mentioned. There was, there was a question about, or issue about whether adequate service was provided to the schools during the remote session. The school IT director supports this for future remote learning in the schools if it's necessary, if and when it's necessary. And, and so this is something that is supported by, you know, the IT professionals for the town and the schools. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Hein, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. By the way, members, if you keep your hand up while the speaker is speaking, I'll assume you have a follow-up. Unlike at the high school, you'd be standing there, and I'd understand that. So if you're done, if you could just put your hand down and I'll know you're finished and we can proceed. With that, I will go over to our second citizen, Ms. Rosemary Cochran. Ms. Cochran also approached me, received permission to speak. Ma'am, I'm not sure you spoke before this body. If you could state your name, your address, you limit your comments to 10 minutes. I think you have a slide you sent us with your question, so thank you for the preparation. Our Warrant Committee Clerk will put that up. And ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rosemary Cochran. I live at 505 Apetton Street, and I'm in Precinct 5. So I'm speaking about the Article 3 and the I-NET proposal, which is to deploy new fiber infrastructure to replace the existing connections, as has been presented. If this plan proceeds as it is presented, the town would undertake the full responsibility for I-NET, for network infrastructure, which has been talked about primarily, but also for operations in the cybersecurity of that, of that network as well. And that includes a lot of other things, including, you know, the deployment of the fiber, the equipment installs, maintenance, technology upgrades, the operations piece of the network security, network management, et cetera. And so there's a concern on my end in terms of what had been articulated earlier about, about what that takes to do. It's really more than just fiber implementation. The contract with Comcast is for broadband connectivity and cable service without any charge to connect those buildings right now. So there, we're going from not paying something for those connections. There's also the PEG piece of that as well. Milton is paid by the contractually to do that. They pay a percentage, 5% of the gross annual revenue for the licenses to be in the town. That is obviously one of the carrots to get into towns. And the additional PEG Access Fund that we're talking about is also part of that. There's 400,000 is my understanding for capital funding. So the issue is really what, you know, what are we designing and what is going to be there going forward? We talked about a lot, we've already heard tonight about new schools being built, new fire stations being built. We have, you know, a lot of things that are on the plate. Certainly, the, it would be hard to have any network of that age be sufficient to do the things that should be done in the town. And it seems that we're kind of jumping to going into the fiber without really looking at what many, every business is doing. And certainly, COVID exacerbated it, which is a digital transformation requiring really an assessment of all the applications that are in the town, of which there are many, and they are increasing, and certainly, they are changing very quickly. So things are, things are moving to the cloud. There are other types of alternatives from a technology standpoint that probably should be looked at as well. And the entire town should really be involved in that. In terms of this particular vote, my understanding is that the, the first vote was done back in May, and a second vote by town meeting is needed to start a municipal broadband service. And that would happen tonight or at the May meeting. That's one of the questions I have. But just going forward, the municipal broadband projects that are out there, and that has been raised because there has been public statements that Milton is considering a service that would be better, faster, and cheaper for the residential side. And that is a major issue just relative to wiring the town, and particularly in towns, parts of the town that are underground as well. In terms of, of questions, then, the questions I have, what I, what is the business case and the proposed technical plan that has been presented? And we understand what the request is for 350,000. But the business case and specific technical plan, we want to put out to bid. I'd suggest that maybe 350,000 is, is too much to initiate for that. It's not clear if that also requires a vote just to go forward with the actual deployment. So the annual projected cost of ownership is the second question. The funding sources have been talked about and how Milton taxpayers will be impacted really hasn't, frankly. And we are talking about, you know, having to refresh this network over and over. My other question is, does the request for funding include the advancement on the municipal service that would provide the town residents and businesses if they chose to, to connect? And is a yes vote on this article the second vote that's needed to actually initiate that we would go ahead with a built-in municipal broadband service? And I'd just finish up by saying that in a recent study, a 2021 study on outcomes of 15 municipal broadband projects, found that 13 of them required further infusions of cash, including from general tax revenue, and five of them had significant bond ratings that were downgraded. The, and then I'd just end with, you've all heard about Google, I'm sure, Google Fiber. It's a, you know, close to $200 billion company. And they have a department called Google Fiber. Google Fiber, you can, you can Google it and see what, what it looks like. They had, more than 10 years ago, tried to get into the fiber business to compete with AT&amp;T and Verizon and Comcast. They didn't really go so well, and they pulled out of a lot. They had costs and challenges of just deploying the new fiber, which was a major piece of that. So it's, it's not as simple as just laying fiber and, and then everything else falls into place. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back.
Thank you, ma'am, for your participation and also your preparation. Mr. Zulus, do you have a response?
Yes, and it may help if we put the questions back up because I didn't, I didn't get a chance to write them all down.
Yep, we'll do that.
If you want to put the slide back up.
She saved us the trouble, so we appreciate it.
First, I will say, there was an issue, a question about whether this is municipal broadband or fiber to the home. This is not municipal broadband or fiber to the home. This is a cable with 288 fiber strands of fiber for connectivity for town buildings and for MPEG. It is not fiber to the home. It is something that the town needs to prepare its network infrastructure for the future. The, and so, and so this is not, this is not, again, if you could bring those, I'm not, if you can bring those questions back up.
Right.
And then, and then, and then, and then there was also a question of, there was also a question of, well, you know, the town had, the town will have full responsibility for upgrades and for, for connections. And the town has that responsibility now. The only thing that, that Comcast does, when it does it, is maintenance and support. And we would contract that maintenance and support to a third party. That's all that Comcast does now, 12,000 for maintenance and support. And according to the estimates from our, our expert, our expert consultant, CTC, we would, we would contract that out so we wouldn't have to hire anyone to provide, to provide that maintenance and support services. So, oops, we lost the, we lost the slide. Here it is. Okay. So the I-NET business case, the business case is use ARPA funds and the cable-related fund to build the network. And according to the technical plan laid out by CTC in its design and cost estimate, and when we put, if and when we put out an RFP, then the, the company that designs and construction, constructs the I-NET will have the opportunity to, to use that as a starting point to create the plan. How much is the I-NET's annual projected cost of ownership? As we showed you, right now, we pay 12,000. The annual projection of costs, if we own our own I-NET, would be 24,400. What are the funding sources? Again, we propose ARPA funds and the cable-related fund, so Milton taxpayers will not be impacted by that, other than the annual increase of 1 one hundredth of a percent, 1 one hundredth of 1% of, of the annual town budget. Who will be responsible for managing the proposed I-NET project? This would be if, when we send out an RFP for design and construction, the, the proposals would, would include having, having a project manager to design and construct the project, and they would work with our IT professionals in town. When we talk to our IT professionals, they, both at the town and the school side, they describe it as really a plug-and-play. Once you have the cable built and you do the cut-over, that's really what it, what it entails. And then they control everything with their electronics on the edge of the, on the edge of the network. Does the 350,000 request include advancement of broadband service? This is not for broadband service, fiber to the home. This is for the This is not for broadband service, fiber to the home, this is for the the town's network and for M P E G. And is yes vote on this, the second vote needed for? No, the answer to question six is no, this has, again, this is not municipal broadband fiber to the home. This is the I net, which is the the network that connects the government and the town and and school buildings. And and M P E G. And I think that covers everything, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mrs. Willis. I see three members, Stephen McCurdy, Joseph Chamberlain, Regina Campbell Malone, Mr. McCurdy, you are recognized. Mr. McCurdy, you there?
Yes, I am, Steve McCurdy, precinct seven, unmute wouldn't come up for me. Steve McCurdy precinct seven, I I do want to emphasize something, I've heard a couple times now. That it said that there's no cost because we can use ARPA. The ARPA is available for water sewer and broadband. We have a very old water system and an older sewer system and we chronically. Have under invested in those, the sewer system. Leaks every time that it rains and it's probably leaking now and will be. Challenged by in infiltration and inflow over the next couple of days. So this isn't a no cost, it's an opportunity cost. I I for one, I'm gonna vote no on this, it feels to me. Like we need milk and are buying a cow and I'm I'm a skeptic of this and I'm gonna vote no, thank you.
Thank you, sir, next we have Mr. Chamberlain, you're recognized. Nope, looks like Mr. Chamberlain has dropped off and so has Ms. Malone, so we just have Ms. Agostino, you're recognized. He was there, but he's gone. Oh, sorry, Ms. Malone, there you are at the top, I'm sorry, Ms. Malone, you're recognized, Ms. Agostino, my mistake, we'll come back.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Thank you, that's great, thank you so much, Regina Campbell Malone, precinct one. I just want to clarify something and I'm sure that you've said this and I've missed it. But I understand that the twenty four thousand dollars in annual costs. Is greater than the twelve thousand that we're currently paying to Comcast. And that the the value added is that we will have a newer and more modernized broadband infrastructure. Other than that that this twenty four thousand dollars will reduce our liability for repairs and replacement. What is the value added of paying double? The the ca the current cost to Comcast? And then my my second question is, I understand that this is not. Going to provide us with fiber to the home. But is there the added opportunity? Of not municipal broadband, but wireless service that that could cast a net. Throughout the entire town and provide wireless service, paid or otherwise, to local residents.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Zulus, do you have those answers?
I think I do for the first, the second one, I it may be beyond my my ability to. To answer, but let me let me first say with for the value add, the value add of the twelve thousand four hundred. Value add is, we have a network that will allow us to do the things that we current that we can't currently do. Our I T department and our school department have told us now they need more strands, they could use up to thirty six strands. To provide services in town for public safety and for the schools. And so the value add is to provide a a network that we can use in the near term and for the future. A future proof network that we can use along into the future, so. That is the value add both in the short term and in the long term. And in addition, there is the potential for leasing strands and so there is a potential for revenue to the town. That would that would that would certainly mitigate the the maintenance and support costs of twenty four thousand four hundred dollars. And there may, there's a possibility that if we have enough users of those strands, we could actually see positive revenue. I I also want to point out, oh, the wireless, is there a possibility that we could connect the town wireless? I don't have the answer to that, I you know, that's that's beyond my, that wasn't something that's mentioned in the C T C report. And so it's nothing that are, it's that wasn't something that any of our I T professionals have mentioned during our discussion, so I'm not, I'm not aware of that. One thing I just want to respond to, one of the speakers mentioned our sewer systems. We have the first appropriation of of ARPA funds made by. The select board was to to appropriate a million dollars for a sewer project. And so and so I think there are projects that that the ARPA funds can be used fun. For, but certainly I think municipal broadband is an infrastructure project that is important, one of those important projects for the town, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir, I see Ms. Agostino and Mr. O'Halloran, Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
Hi, Diane DiTulio Agostino, precinct nine. There have been a lot of good points raised, especially the water and sewer. Which I don't think in my lifetime will actually appropriate enough money to take care of Milton's issues. And I think part of my concern is in these Zoom meetings. It's not, it really isn't the same as a back and forth discussion, maybe that's what's lost in on this article. I'm not hearing anyone say. Or I haven't received maybe that extra sheet that might show. That the board of selectmen went and looked at how many cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Mass are currently doing this. Has the issue was raised, what how many of those cities or towns then had to tax? Anything, I don't care if it's point zero zero one percent more out of the tax dollars. To put this in place, it would be an additional tax dollar that I'd rather see go to public safety and the schools. So with that in mind, I'd like to refer this back to the select board in the hope that. In the spring, we'd have an actual opportunity for the select board to present to us. You know, an analysis of all of these serious. Questions that were raised and how other cities and towns in Massachusetts dealt with it. And I think we'd be better prepared to make a wiser decision at that point.
Okay.
Without that, without that, I would be voting no, so thank you.
All right, thank you, so we have a motion to refer this back to the select board. Is there a second, if so, could you say second in the chat window? In the question and answer? I see a second from Cindy Christensen, okay, we now have a motion before the body to refer this back to the select board. So with that, unless you have want to talk to the motion to refer rather than the value. Or the original recommendation, if you could put your hands down. And then I'll start recognizing people that want to talk about the motion to refer. So I'll pause a minute. And I still see, okay, we have. No speakers who wish to address the motion to refer. Miss Agostino, now I see Mr. Chamberlain, your hand is up, so Mr. Chamberlain, you're recognized. And if you can unmute, sir, we'll. Hear your points.
Oh, hi, sorry, this is Joe Chamberlain, precinct four.
We can hear you.
Ooh, couldn't find that audio button. Yeah, about on the motion to refer. I think what Diane was referring to was, did we do? By the way, I was on the, I was the chair of the broadband committee back in two thousand eighteen, in two thousand nineteen, and I'm on the broadband committee now. And she asked the question of.
Excuse me, sir, did you list your precinct, I may have missed it, pardon me.
Precinct four.
Thank you.
Yep, and she asked the question, did we do any research on any towns who are now doing this right now? Were there any tax implications? And did and were taxes raised on other communities in Massachusetts? Due to a municipal broadband network? The answer to that question is yes, we did research that. And emphatically, the answer is no taxes. That were, I'm sorry, in Leverett, Massachusetts, they did impose a modest tax. All the other towns who were studying were all doing it at the same time right now. And as Mike Zulus has introduced this bill that we're voting on right now. Our one hundred percent focus is on doing this without raising taxes. On anybody in town. So I strongly stand against referring this back to the select board today, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I see Mr. Desmond on the phone, your hand is raised. If you do wish to speak, could you star six and unmute yourself and you can address the body? And maybe I have that wrong, Mr. Desmond, I think I've got a mistake, that's not your hand on the phone, I apologize. I think the next speaker would be Cindy Christensen, you are recognized, ma'am.
Cindy Christensen, precinct seven.
If you could get a little closer to the mic, you're a little faint.
Cindy Christensen, precinct seven.
Thank you.
I listened to two of the last three broadband committee meetings. And the last one I listened to, I was disappointed to see that there seemed to be. A lot of confusion even among the members disagreements about. Some of the numbers that were being used for depreciation and number of years of depreciation. And so it's because of that meeting that I that I listened to and. That I that I do think that we need to defer this back and. That there needs to be more information and a settlement even among the. The committee members as to what the costs and depreciation will be.
Thank you for your comments. I see no other hands raised other than, let me go to my panelist panel. I think Mr. Zulus, your hand is raised, you wish to address the body. Reply.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I just want to point out that the the committee is one hundred, one hundred percent in support of the presentation and the numbers. The extent, the the fact that the committee had discussions. And extensive discussions about those numbers in order to get to where we are, which is a a a we we think is a very conservative. But a very, a very strong estimate of what the cost would be. Based on consulting with professionals and based on reviewing all the data, the fact that we reached that conclusion and now all one hundred, one hundred percent we all support it. I think speaks to the strength of this proposal, the fact of the matter is, this is an infrastructure need of the town. It it is not, again, it's not municipal broadband, it is an infrastructure need of the town, so we could go to other towns and say. Well, how much did it cost you to replace your 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 I net, your your institutional network? But beyond that, any. Any experience of a town with their I net would be different to the extent that they don't need an additional line. Fact of the matter is, we need more bandwidth, we need more connectivity. We need a better a better networking infrastructure in this town. And this is a way to do it without expending local ta local taxpayer funds, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir, so I see Mr. Turner, town meeting member, you're recognized.
Darnell Turner, precinct one. As we go over this, referring this back to the town, to the board, to go back over these numbers and everything, my opinion. Is a little waste, we need the infrastructure, we need this type of hardware in the town, we need to upgrade in the technology. There was some if some people talking about the security and how are we gonna secure it? We're we're talking about hardware here, a lot of this is hardware that we're talking about and we're bringing companies in. Could be Comcast, could be Verizon, could be a number of companies coming in actually. Run that, we're gonna have to pay for that anyway. Whether we're paying Comcast under a cert a bill that we have now or if we're paying some other provider, I C A, whoever. Positive, we're gonna have to pay for anyway, but this year we're talking about now is hardware. And if we look at a, you know, a broader picture of what's going on. Outside, there's gonna be monies made available for basically shovel ready product programs. And I think we should get ourselves in line to be able to take that and make that happen when things come up. So pushing this back, killing time on it. We can miss other opportunities to spend funds and get money that's hopefully coming down from the federal government right now, so. I think we should also think about that, let's get this thing done, stop kicking it down the road and let's make this thing happen. So I don't think we should go and try to refer this back, I think we should settle this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir, at this point, I only see two hands. Mr. Joe Henning's hand is up and since he only used three and a half of his ten minutes, I'll recognize him and then I see Ms. Agostino, your hand is still up. That'll be your second chance to speak and we'll come back to you, so Mr. Joe Henning, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you. I simply say that I believe that there are existing commercial products like Comcast business. Verizon business that are available. And their networks are already built. Would it take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out and ask them? If they could provide the services that we need and to ask them how much it would cost per year? And then if we find that it's that we could do better, then we can better tailor and aim. The product that is eventually built. I think we don't need to build anything if the services already exist at competitive price. Don't we owe ourselves the duty to see whether commercial companies would provide to us the services that we need? Since I haven't seen the request for quote or any definition of what it is exactly we need. I wonder, you know, can we get that done? Can we send it out, can we find out whether commercial companies can su can support our needs? Without having to invest in an I net replacement, thank you.
Mr. Zulus, do you have some comments to address Mr. Joe Henning's concern?
Just just very quickly, Mr. Ma Moderator, the network is not built. We currently currently, there is a six strand Comcast network that is not sufficient, the services don't exist. What what we what we will need to do is build a new network and once we hit end of life. Under our current agreement with Comcast, they wipe their hands of it. And then and then we'll be left at that point. To try to build something or ask them to build it for us and pay for it and and pay for them to build it and they'll own it. So we'll we'll be required to pay for it and they'll own it, this is a way for us to build a network that we need. And and to do it without having any cost to the taxpayer, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, I recognize, I see Sean O'Rourke, Mr. O'Rourke, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Sean O'Rourke, town meeting member, precinct eight, and chair of the school building committee. When I'm not, you know, working on the schools, my full time job is a director of electrical engineering. For a company here in Boston and, you know, we design these systems around. The country for communities that are looking to expand, like the future coming down the road, Mike referenced I O team. For those that don't understand what that is, it's Internet of Things, everything coming out is connecting to the Internet. This I see is a is an investment. The six strands that we're that Mike's talking about that's existing. Our typical design when we do a building from what what's called a main distribution frame room, which is the data center, if you want to call it. Call it that, to an independent distribution frame room and I D F. Is a minimum of of twelve strands and that's within an office building. To have an entire community run on six strands is kind of unheard of. The two hundred eighty eight strands that are there, I think is a great investment. They have done their due diligence from looking at the, you know, the documentation that they provided, I've sat in on a couple of the meetings. I've sat in on a couple of the meetings and, you know, to the motion that's here, I'm against it. And for the overall article, I can't rise high enough for it.
Thank you, sir. With that, I'll go to our last speaker, Ms. Agostino. Your second bite at the apple. You're recognized. And then we'll go to the vote on the motion to refer. So man, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Diane Tullioak, Agostino, precinct nine. I appreciate some of the additional information, answers to my the point that I made regarding some very good questions were asked that we did not hear the answers to. And I don't think, knowing how delayed supplies are these days, I wouldn't call it exactly kicking it down the buck, the road, because more and this is only a majority vote, correct, Mr. Moderator?
Correct.
Okay.
Motion to refer is a majority, both are majority votes, ma'am.
Right. So for the sake of obtaining some of those other answers, I I was very impressed with the town resident who actually gave us a gave you a question list to put up there. That was really educational. And I still have not heard, you know, my point was, there's 356 cities and towns in the state of Massachusetts are, just looking on the Internet, I only saw about 20 that might be doing this. So maybe we're rushing something that in a short time, there might be a better way of doing it. So that's when I said, maybe we could just refer it back to the select board. And now I would ask that people consider referring it back far further answers to those questions, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll seek two opinions. One will go to the select board and ask them for their opinion on this motion to refer, since you're the submitting body. And then we'll go to the warrant committee for their opinion, then we'll go to the vote. So select board, do you have an opinion on the motion to refer? And by the way, select board, Mr. O'Rourke, did you have follow-on comments? You do get a second chance, but or is your hand just up as an echo? Hand is down. Thank you. Select board will await your answer.
Mr. Moderator, Katie Conlon, the chair of the select board and precinct three town meeting member of the select board, is unanimously opposed to the motion to refer this back for further study. We urge a no vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We're just waiting for the warrant committee to vote and we'll recognize Chair Asher when they have that vote complete. Is Mr. Asher ready? And Ms. Cochran, I did I do see your hand is up now, however.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, if you could hold just for a second, Mr. Asher. Ms. Cochran, I'd already called for the 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 closing of this, so I'm sorry, there's not another opportunity for you to speak. But thank you for your contribution to town.
Mr. Moderator.
You're recognized, sir.
Thank you. George Asher, Chair, Warrant Committee, precinct precinct six. The warrant committee unanimously rejects the concept of referring back to the select board of this motion.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a moment to make sure all our panelists are returned back to the attendee pool and go to the vote. Okay, if we can put up the poll. We are now voting on the motion to refer this back to the select board. It's a majority vote only. So if you're in favor of revoting this back, you say yes. Otherwise, opposed, no. So all those who favor the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones, on the phones, all in favor of referring this back to the select board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Thank you. We can mute. And if we can post the results. The motion carries, sorry, the motion fails. So 60% yes, 84% no, zero abstains. I did add into that the the two votes on the phones of the motion to refer fails. With that, we are back to the main motion before the body, which is to accept or reject the recommendation as you see printed in the warrant, if we can close the polling results. At this point, I anyone wish to speak to our main motion on the floor about this recommendation as printed in the warrant? I see no other, I see one hand. Mr. O'Halloran, you're recognized. And if you want to mute. If you're gonna mute, Mr. O'Halloran.
Hi, this is Brian O'Halloran, precinct three. I've heard some discussion around some data around 288 strands and potential for lease agreements. Mr. Moderator, I'm concerned that over time, this could encroach on private slash commercial regulations imposed by the town on availability of that. So for example, I could imagine that at some point, the town decides to lease to Comcast, but puts restrictions on what sorts of movies people can watch. How do we, you know, what are the guardrails that we put in place to prevent that sort of situation? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zulus, can you respond to those questions?
Mr. Moderator, hello?
There you are.
Okay, I'm not a panelist right now, so.
That's fine. If it's important, please speak.
Yep, as long as long as you can hear me. So so I think the question was, what commercial regulations would we put in place if we got to the point of of leasing strands? The answer is, it is, it is, it is premature to to determine whether there'd be any regulations. I don't know the, the answer is, I can't imagine what that is. All we know from the experts, all we know from Columbia Technology Corporation is that there is the opportunity to lease strands to commercial businesses and third parties. And they pointed out in their report, some anchor institutions that may wish to lease strands, such as Curry College, Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Milton Academy. So I don't know what those what those regulations would be, certainly if there would be any. Certainly, any any agreements would be vetted by town council, would be vetted with with, you know, by the town. And so so I think it's premature to be concerned about if we have the opportunity to lease strands to make money for the town, what those agreements would entail.
Thank you, sir. Mr. O'Halloran, your hand still up? Any follow-up?
No, thank you. I'll be watching this issue closely. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I see no other raised hands. So if we could make sure all the panelists are in attendees, we'll proceed to a vote. Okay, if we can open the poll. So now we are voting on the main motion as printed in the warrant and in the bold recommended text. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, signify by voting no. All standing, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, oh, sorry, I wasn't, I didn't have a sorry, I wasn't aware you were unmuted. So all on the phones, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
Thank you. We can mute the phone.
Of course.
And I think we can, if we could mute whatever voices there, hosts you see, thank you. And I think we can close the poll and present the results. The motion carries, it's a majority vote. The motion carries with a vote of 86% yes, 13% no, and 1% abstain. Thank you. We'll proceed to Article four. Recommended that the town amend the fiscal year 2022 appropriation for the law budget under Article 12 of the 2021 annual town meeting by transferring $10,000 from the professional and special services line to the retainer line as follows. Retainer 75,000, professional special services 270,000, disbursements 6,500, claims 1,000, total law 352,500. This was submitted by the select board. Get my panelist up and recognize if anyone wishes to speak to this motion. I see Cindy Christensen, ma'am, you're recognized. Unless, select board, if you want to speak first, I think you want.
We did, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I thought, sorry, my mistake. Ms. Christensen, the we'll let the select board speak as they submitted this article. I'll come back to you. Ms. Conlon, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. In Article four, we are not proposing any change to the bottom line for appropriation. This is a transfer within two categories of the law budget. Many of the town meeting members are former members of the select board or the warrant committee and are familiar with the law budget. But we also have a lot of new town meeting members who have not had an opportunity to really become familiar with the law budget. So I thought I would give a brief explanation of the appointment process and the budget itself. The select board appoints town council, and we typically do that at the end of a fiscal year in June, effective for the next fiscal year, which begins July 1st. The state's procurement law, Chapter 30B, does not apply to the engagement of legal counsel. Since 1989, Murphy Hesse, Tumi and Lahane LLP, has served as Milton's town council. That firm has a deep institutional knowledge of the town and its government. At the start of the annual budget process in the fall, town council submits a written proposal for a fee increase or in some years advises the select board and the town administrator that no increase is being sought. The law budget goes through the same process that all of the other budgets do. And ultimately, town meeting votes in appropriation for legal services. That's why we're here this evening. There are two major components to Milton's law budget. The first is a flat fee, but it has been called a retainer for decades and by some other communities as well as Milton. The retainer or the flat fee covers all of the general day-to-day advice that is provided by town council to boards, committees, the town administrator, and department heads. It is not a traditional retainer that is replenished by the town when it is paid down. So sometimes in the private sector, some some members may be used to client paying a retainer to a law firm and then replenishing it as it's paid down. That is not the case here. This is a flat fee. It's currently at $65,000 and it is paid at 12 monthly installments. That has been the practice for a very long time, including long before any member of the current board has served on the select board. The second major component is what we call professional and special services. And under that bill, under that line item, town council bills the town at a discounted rate of $210 per hour. This is for litigation matters, real estate transactions, any project that falls outside the scope of general advice to town boards and committees. The flat fee in recent years has become unsustainable and really unjust. Town council is performing a substantial amount of work under the flat fee and it's work and town council's workload is growing. As an example, the amount of time that town council spends reviewing and responding to public records requests ballooned from 47 hours in fiscal year 19 to 643 hours in fiscal 20. In fiscal year 19, town council town council billed 981 hours under the flat fee. And that meant that town council's effective hourly rate was $66.26 per hour. The next year, fiscal year 20, town council billed 1,649 hours under the flat fee, reducing the effective hourly rate to $39.42. So you can see why we're looking to increase the retainer by $10,000. In fact, two years ago, town council requested an increase in the flat fee from $65,000 to $75,000. This is for the FY 20 budget. The select board supported that increase, as did the warrant committee through its budget recommendation for the FY 20 budget. In May of 2019, when we got to the annual town meeting, we were looking to see if we could increase some additional funding for the school department and the library and other departments. We made some last-minute changes to the budget. One of those changes was to reduce the retainer line from $75,000 to $65,000. And town council, at the time, we had former town council John Flynn retiring and town council Kevin Fry take stepping into that role. And they graciously agreed to that last-minute increase. And it was last minute. It was constructed over weekend before the Monday evening town meeting. But the time has come to restore this reduction and to move $10,000 from the professional and special services line to the retainer line because of the amount of work that is being done and billed to the town under the retainer. We ask the town meeting members, join us in supporting the recommendation of the warrant committee. Town has been well-served by Murphy Hesse, Tumi and Lahane, and we believe that this is a very appropriate change to make to this budget. And again, it will not affect the bottom line of the budget. It will only affect the two major components of the budget. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. I only see one member's hand raised, that of Cindy Christensen. Ma'am, thank you for your patience. You're recognized.
Cindy Christensen, precinct seven. Moderator hiss. I'm asking town meeting members to vote no on this.
Ma'am, you're very faint. If you could get close to your mic, please.
Okay.
That's better. That's better. Thank you.
I'll start from the beginning. This is Cindy Christensen, precinct. I'm asking town meeting members to vote no on this article. Since the annual town meeting, I've been researching and learning a lot about towns' legal services, the buildings, the legal services in other towns, and municipal law. My work on this has been motivated by my belief town meeting members should not trust process but should question the authority that dictates the process.
I'm sorry, ma'am, your your voice is going in and out. It's it's very hard to hear you.
What I, my work.
That's better.
Okay, my work on this has been motivated by my belief that town meeting members should not trust the process but should question it and also question the authority that dictates the process. What I didn't know when I started this project was that my work would bring to light many town council services problems that I had not expected. And my work isn't done. So I'm asking town meeting members to vote no on this article and instead that we encourage town government to do three things. Number one, require that the town make a request for bids for legal services prior to the fiscal year 23 discussions about appropriations for legal services. Although not required by Massachusetts Municipal Finance Law, according to the Inspector General's Office, it is, quote, strongly recommended that towns make requests for proposals for town legal services. We have not done so for at least 15 years and probably more like 25. I question the motives of anyone who is against the town going through a bid process for legal services. The argument by some officials who are against a bill bid process is that the current law firm has, quote, institutional knowledge. Personally, I believe that in this case, institutional knowledge is overrated. Our goal should be for the town to have competent legal counsel with municipal law knowledge that will help the town prevent billable hours, not increase them. Number two, instead of voting in favor of this, we should encourage town government to require. to require checks and balances on town legal services billings. The town does not possess adequate itemized records to know what taxpayers are being charged for legal services. No one in town government is requiring and then reviewing itemized billings for retainer and special legal services. So, before shifting around appropriations, we should require all legal fee invoices to be itemized, and these itemized records be reviewed and retained by the town. Also, a report is needed that shows that there is no current fund shifting among appropriations accounts. Number three, instead of voting in favor of this article, I encourage town government to figure out why town council is doing so much of the public records work. Most towns use the town clerk's office for this. Are boards and committee actions and possibly poor decisions causing the increase? If yes, we can fix that in other ways. Regarding open meeting law, my research over the last five months shows that past and current town council have not always provided accurate advice about open meeting law, thus causing more billable hours in the long run. Town meeting members need to be loyal to the taxpayers, not the law firm that the select board uses for town legal services. To summarize, instead of yes on this article, vote no and require these three things. Number one, a bid process for legal services prior to the fiscal year twenty-three town meeting. Number two, checks and balances on town legal services billing. Number three, a report as to why town council is doing so much of the public records work and whether provided services related to open meeting law have been adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chinman has raised a point of order. Sorry, Mr. Chinman, we were having trouble with Ms. Christensen or Dr. Christensen, I was trying to get her comments in. Mr. Chinman, you're recognized for your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have a, a longstanding rule that anyone with a monetary or equitable interest in a matter under discussion has to disclose that. Ms. Christensen is, has a current lawsuit in Norfolk Superior Court. She's suing town officials regarding her termination as a town official, she's seeking monetary damages, and I suggest that she clearly has a monetary or equitable interest in how the town funds its council services that was undisclosed. So I, I suggest that Ms. Christensen's comments be stricken.
Thank you, sir. I may just consult, I think I have a solid ground on this, I'm just going to consult the town council for a moment, so if the body will bear with me, I'll be right back. So, Mr. Christensen, two things. We do require disclosure if there is an attorney who is representing another party in the interest in the, in an item before the town, but actually, Town Meeting Time, which overall governs the meetings of the Commonwealth, states that by definition, since every town meeting member is a citizen, and they all have an interest in the outcome of the events, that they are not subject to the conflict of interest law if they are speaking in their capacity as a town meeting member representing one of the items. So I'm going to allow her comments to remain in the record and then continue on with our other speakers, and I think that is now Mr. Walker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. Both of the two previous speakers, I think, raised some important points. However, I would just point out that with regard to this particular article, it's simply moving ten thousand dollars from one line, line item to another. So I think that should be the focus of the discussion, and on, on that particular point, I am certainly in favor of the recommendation from the select board, and I urge everyone to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll recognize Ms. Conlon, Chair of the Select Board, ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to just respond to a couple of the points that were raised relating to itemized invoices. The town has always received itemized invoices with respect to professional and special services bills. Town has not always received itemized invoices with respect to the retainer because we haven't always requested them. We, we are now receiving them as a matter of course, but I, I think I should point out to town meeting members that members of this board and the town administrator, who reviews most of the invoices for us, are very familiar with all of the work that's being done by town council. Not every resident of the town is certainly, but this board knows the different matters that town council is working on under the retainer. But that said, we do get itemized invoices on all of the professional special services and, and inconsistently in the past, but now going forward, we are getting itemized invoices under the retainer. Regarding the public records question and why is town council so involved? Town council's not involved if a records request is simply asking for a motor vehicle accident report, or a birth certificate, or a copy of a document that was discussed at a meeting. Town council's involvement comes when there are questions relating to exemptions from the public records law, confidentiality issues, requests for meeting minutes such as, or including executive session meeting minutes where there may be reasons that legal review is needed and redaction of some of the records is needed. So that is why town council is involved in a lot of those requests, and I hope that answers the questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Conlon, I'll recognize then Ms. Agostino.
Mr. Moderator, Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct Nine, and former selectman during the years nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine, two thousand, and back then, I actually attended a town council annual meeting, because at the time, the town of Milton's Town Council was not contracted, neither the town council nor his firm. And I'd like to know, well, increasing this retainer by this small amount is not going to be impacted whether we have a contract or not. I want to know if in recent years, we've actually moved to where probably every other town in the Commonwealth is, which is with a contract with a law firm. Thank you very much, if we can get that answer.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon, can you answer that for us?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The practice in Milton has been, as I said at the beginning, for an appointment vote being taken by the board and then a fee letter that sets forth the fees the town council's requesting, and then a budget process. We don't have an official engagement letter, as is traditionally understood in private relationships with law firms. We certainly can do that. This board hasn't seen any reason to change the practice that we've had for almost thirty years in place, but that could certainly be considered, and my understanding is town council is not opposed to that at all, and would be quite willing to do that. That's an executive function, it's not a legislative function, but this board has been satisfied with the relationship that's been in place, which is the annual vote and the fee letter. So I hope that's, answers the question.
Ms. Agostino, see your hands up, do you have a follow-up? Ms. Agostino, any follow-up?
Yes, the, hello?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, because the unmute button never came up. Diana Tullio Agostino, Precinct Nine, thank you very much for the updated answer, and as I learned at that town council annual meeting, contracts are not just for the private sector, they're also for the public. So I would encourage the Board of Selectmen to review what type of contracts other cities and towns have. I would greatly appreciate any follow-up information that you do obtain on that. And as you pointed out, I greatly appreciate the town council, well, actually, it's his firm, would not have any objection to a contractual obligation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I see Michael Chinman, and then if no other meeting members raise their hands, we'll close with Cindy Christensen. Mr. Chinman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Michael Chinman, Precinct Two. There was a select board meeting on August third discussing the increase in the town council fees or hours spent on public records requests, and the select board chair during that meeting made the point that she made again here tonight, that fiscal year twenty-nineteen, town council spent forty-seven point five hours on public records requests. Fiscal year twenty-twenty, spent six-hundred-and-forty-three hours. That's over a thirteen-fold increase. And member Zulus asked, of those six-hundred-and-forty-three hours, how many requesters were there? Which I think raises a good point about, is the proportion staying the same? Is it just there are a lot more requesters, or there are a small number of requesters who have dramatically increased the number of public records requests? At the time, the chair did not know the answer to that question posed by Mr. Zulus, but I'm wondering if that answer is now known.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon? Do you have that answer, without disclosing the names, I think, on Town Meeting? Ms. Conlon or other members of the select board? If you could just let me know you're conferring. Mr. Fallon, could you mute yourself unless you wish to be recognized? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I think what we could say is that there are a lot more requests, there are a lot more complex requests that often involve a lot of review that needs to be done by town council. There are, there are, as you may expect, there are some people who might request one or two items in a given year. Of course, many residents request none at all, and there are some residents who request, submit very large numbers of requests. So we run the gamut from, from people who might submit one a year to the other end, fairly significant number during the course of the year.
Thank you, ma'am. The only hand I see, Mr. Chinman, any follow-up? I see you're still unmuted or you're satisfied?
I didn't know I was still unmuted.
Yep, okay, thank you, sir. With that, the only other member I see is Cindy Christensen. Ma'am, you're recognized again, you've got about two and a half minutes left out of your ten, thank you.
Cindy Christensen, Precinct Seven. I want to clarify some of the information that I've received from the Inspector General's Office. Number one, retainer and flat monthly are two different things even in town government. So we have been appropriating money believing it was to a retainer when it's actually flat monthly, and in the Inspector General's Office opinion, those are two different things, not just something that you can flip-flop back and forth. Number two, they have also told me that engagement letters are required. So this, well, maybe we can have them, maybe, but maybe we don't need them, is not correct from the information that I've received from the Inspector General's Office. What bothers me is that we have a town council who has not insisted on an engagement letter for however many years that has been reported here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no other hands raised, pardon me, I do see a panelist, Ms. Conlon, you're recognized, that'll be the closing comment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think we need to respond to that. There's been no suggestion that town council has not insisted upon it, that the practice that has gone on for a number of years, certainly, Eddie, some of the, some of the town meeting members here have served on this board when the practice was put into place. So it's just a, practice is carried forward from year to year. Town council is more than willing to revisit the issue of whether we should have a signed engagement letter every year, and board is not opposed to that. There has been no flip-flopping between calling it a retainer and a flat fee, that the name that has been given to the flat fee in the warrant, and it may be confusing, and that's why I explained it at the beginning. It is a flat fee, it's just called a retainer, and it's called a retainer not only by Milton, but by many other communities. That's just a tradition that has grown up, and we've tried to explain tonight that it's a flat fee and it's paid monthly, and I, I hope we've clarified that, but that's just the name that has been given to it for a long period of time. There's no intent to flip-flop or to call something one term when we mean something else, that I, I'm not sure we're calling it retainer-generated, that's where that started, but that's been just a practice in many communities as well as Milton. So I think that was important to respond to both of those things. We've been very upfront about what the, what the, hopefully seventy-five thousand dollar payment in the given fiscal year would cover. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we'll proceed to the vote. Now, we're going to be voting, if we could move the panelists over to attendees, if you'd just give me a thumbs up when we're ready. When we're ready to do that, we're going to be voting on the motion printed in bold on page twelve and thirteen for Article Four. I'll just wait for a signal from our Zoom host. Okay, if we can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, signify by voting no. All abstaining, please vote abstain, and can we unmute the phones? Think the phones are unmuted. All in favor on the phones, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Thank you, we can mute. And we can close the poll and put up the results. This is a majority vote. The motion carries yes, ninety-three percent, no, seven percent, abstain, one percent. So thank you, we'll now proceed to Article Five. Recommended that the town vote to amend the following appropriations voted in the twenty-twenty-one Annual Town Meeting by the articles referenced in the table below for the twelve-month period beginning July one, twenty-twenty-one. Employee benefits group insurance revised is fourteen, fourteen million, hundred-and-eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-one. Police salary and wages, six million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-and-twelve. Library books and related materials, hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ten. And school department, fifty-four million, three-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-four. Total amended amount for FY twenty-two is one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-two. This is submitted by the select board, and this, I will see if there are any members who wish to speak to this motion. I see one, Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Ten. I rise in support of this recommendation in this article. The question just relates to actually what was Article Five that we discussed in the annual town meeting in May? And in that, in the course of that discussion, which was moving some funds from stabilization to fund departmental budgets, one of which was the schools, the town administrator made the point that there were anticipated federal funds, potentially some additional Chapter Seventy or local aid that he thought would be appropriated to the schools. My question is just whether the town administrator, the town accountant, or the assistant superintendent for business could update us as to whether that did occur, and if so, how much and what amounts were appropriated to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Since this was submitted by the select board, we'll ask Ms. Conlon, do you have that answer? Or should we go to Superintendent Jett or the school board? Ms. Conlon, you there? She's having, we're having some technology issues. Then tell you what, that was, Mr. Then tell you what, that was, Mr. Walker, you addressed that, I think, the, to the school committee. Perhaps. Might they have an answer to your question? I think I see Margaret Everhart. Is Everhart, why don't we recognize you with, to possibly answer this question for Mr. Walker?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting members. I am Margaret Everhart, Chair of the Milton School Committee and a town meeting member from precinct number three. If you would just indulge me for one minute, I would like to thank Brian and Lee Michael and their son Simon for their generous donation this evening to the Milton Public Schools, a result of a terrible incident that they turned into something very positive. I'm not certain if Assistant Superintendent Dexter or Superintendent Jet are still on the call. And if they are, I would like to recognize one of them to address Mr. Walker's question.
Let me take a look.
Okay, or if Dr. Craig Head is still here.
Ms. Dexter, apparently.
Wonderful. That would be terrific.
Ms. Dexter, you're recognized. Or actually, I see Mr. Dennehy is, Mr. Dennehy, do you have an answer for the select board first?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Dennehy, town administrator. I stepped out of the room for the question, but if I understand it correctly, was it, was there additional funding after town meeting appropriated to schools? Is that the question?
No. Quite, the question was during the discussion of article five at the May town meeting, you made the point that it was anticipated that additional federal funds, potentially some additional chapter seventy, or potentially some additional local aid, all of might be coming to the schools. And the question was, for each of those things, did any of that occur? And if so, what were the amounts?
Okay, so from, let me, let me take it backwards, I think. Federal funding, they did receive Ezra funds. Ezra funds, I'm not sure the amount, I believe it to be close to nine hundred thousand dollars, and there was CARES money, the coronavirus aid relief and economic security money that we used to supplement transportation needs and some staffing issues. I will defer to Ms. Dexter for the information regarding Ezra funds.
Thank you. We can recognize Amy Dexter for that answer.
Good evening, Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent for Business for Milton Public Schools. The Milton Public Schools did submit for four of the positions previously requested for one of our federal grants under the sped program. In addition, we have submitted for Esser to also cover some positions, and these two positions here in this article are in addition to that. All of the positions were requested except for one or two back in the budget for FY twenty two and were not approved at town meeting or were related to the December special town meeting last year where positions were approved and then later cut from the budget or eliminated because they were not filled within last fiscal year. If Mr. Jet or one of the school committee members would like to comment more specifically on what the positions are, I don't have the list in front of me. I do know that at least the math and reading specialists were included in some of the grant funded positions.
I don't think we have Mr. Jet in the, in our town meeting tonight. So unless, Ms. Everhart, do you have a?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm happy moderator, Mr. Moderator, to send to Mr. Walker and any town meeting member who would like the complete list of positions that were funded through the different federal grants, and then also what is still under consideration for opera funds moving forward, that those are still being discussed.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
So briefly, I see a James listed in our attendee pool. Sir, could you identify yourself?
He says he's here, but you can't see him, sorry.
Okay, tell you what, Mr. Superintendent Jet. Yes, just, Mr. Jet, why don't we have you speak? And then, actually, let's do this right. Why don't we move you to the panelist pool and we'll reconnect you so you can we can see you and you can speak. So Superintendent Jet, as soon as you are, you are there, please, I see you, please unmute and see if you can answer the question. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. I just would like to, first of all, James Jet, superintendent Milton Public Schools, I would like to echo the sentiments of strong town administrator Mike Dennehy and assistant superintendent of business Amy Dexter. They are correct. Some of the CARES Act money in the federal act, the grant money was used to help us during this past academic year with COVID-related situations, technology, transportation from the town side. We also use that money to hire additional positions. We had teachers who were remote, but we also needed people in the building, and we needed additional support for those who weren't there. And then additional federal grant money that we are applying for as Assistant Superintendent Amy Dexter responded for a math interventionist, reading specialist in supports that we could support our children with unfinished learning, and we hope to continue to do that throughout this academic year as well.
Thank you, superintendent. And Mr. Walker, your hand is still up, and so is yours, Ms. Everhart. Are there echoes or real questions?
Nope, I'm done.
We're done. Very good. And Mr. Dennehy, your hand is still up. I assume nothing else?
Mr. Moderator, one more thing, and this is to address Mr. Walker's question. After town meeting, we actually, when the budget passed from the joint committee and the governor passing the budget, we were actually forty seven thousand, approximately forty seven thousand dollars less than what was appropriated at town meeting. The net of this article is, it justifies that. It's a growth number, netting out the forty seven thousand, approximately forty seven thousand dollars less in state and local aid and chapter seventy money that were received when the governor finalized his budget after May's annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Dennehy. Seeing no other hands, if we can move the panelists to the attendee list, that'll give us a minute. I'll wait for the signal and we'll go to the vote. This will be a majority vote, and again, we are voting on the bold text as printed in your warrant on page thirteen and fourteen for article five. If we could put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
Thank you. We can mute the phones. And close the poll, please, and present the results. The motion carries with a vote of ninety seven percent, yes, three percent, no, and zero abstentions. Now, folks, it is ten twenty eight by my watch. We have one article with some substance, and I'm fairly certain we will dispose of article seven quickly. So if you are willing to get done in one night, I am. Unless someone recommends a motion to adjourn, I say we plow through and get this done. So with that, article six on page fourteen, recommended that the town vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide for unpaid bills from fiscal year twenty twenty one is set forth below. I won't read all the detail, but the total is three hundred and forty nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty three cents. Interestingly, this will require a nine tenths vote. So town council informs me that when we are paying in fiscal year twenty two bills from fiscal year twenty one, this will require a nine tenths vote. I'll start by recognizing Ms. Conlon of the select board to explain what's going on. Ms. Conlon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. My apologies. I had some technical problems for the last article, so I'm sorry I was not able to take part, but thank you to Mr. Dennehy for jumping in. Article six, this is an unpaid bills article, and all of these bills were received after the close of the fiscal year, but they relate to FY twenty twenty one services. So some of them are fairly small, and for instance, Conica Minolta is an equipment lease. Milton Times is an advertising bill. Van Assen Associates is one of the technical experts, peer reviewers for the forty B projects. The Amazon item is, relates to the summer park program and some supplies that the park, the park department had ordered. And there are two police items as well as a Hemley and Barnes legal bill. So these, the largest item, three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for context architecture relates to the fire station building project. And if there are any questions on that, I'll defer those to the chair of the fire station building committee, Mr. Walsh. But these other smaller bills are just, just that items, bills that we received after the close of the fiscal year, and they are legal obligations of the town. We do need to pay these bills. And we're handling it as we have sometimes in the past, needed a unpaid bills article for a prior year in order to make sure that we get these bills paid. So we urge a vote in support of the recommendation of the warrant committee, and we hope that town meeting will give us the nine tenths vote needed to make these payments. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, ma'am. I see no other hands. I saw just one hand, Andres Lessing, and then Steve McCurdy. So, Mr. Lessing, you are recognized.
Good evening, Andres Lessing, precinct eight. And my question to the selectmen is, why do we need to vote to pay for bills that I mean, were to pay for things that we've already approved? It shouldn't matter necessarily when they happen or when they're due, right? I'm just trying to understand, some of these, you know, are like, are now going to be six months late. Right? Our fiscal year ended in June. Are we going to be paying any penalties for paying these late? Thanks.
Your question is clear. Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're not paying penalties, what we're, generally, the bills come in throughout the course of the fiscal year, and the ones that come in early in the year or right up through sometime in the spring. There's really not any issue with getting those paid on time, so to speak, but sometimes some of them come in. For instance, one of them came in right before the end of the fiscal year, and it went into the select board office, and when it was transferred over to the accounting department for payment, the fiscal year had changed. So these are really just a matter of, if vendors' bill is according to their own schedules, and it depends upon when they come in, and the accounting rules and Department of Revenue rules are such that we have to pay fiscal year X's bills within fiscal year X and not with fiscal year Y's bills, with fiscal year Y's revenue, rather. So this is just really a technicality that because of the timing that the bills came in, we need to address this through a fall town meeting article, but normally, if they had been received prior to the end of the fiscal year, which was June thirtieth, they would have been paid without needing this article. I hope that answers Mr. Lessing's question. It really, it really does depend upon when the vendor submits the bill to us. Thank you.
His hand is down, so I assume it does. With that, I see Mr. McCurdy, you're recognized. And if you can unmute, there you go.
Eve McCurdy, precinct seven. Now, the button came, took a minute to come up. I wonder, the question I have is, does the town not have an accounts payable period at the end of the fiscal year for some amount of time during which all of the bills from the prior fiscal year come in and can get satisfied?
Ms. Conlon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The first fifteen days of July is that period, but again, sometimes vendors submit the bills after that date, or they get submitted to one department right before the end of that date, and then when the county receives them, we're just beyond July fifteenth. So there is a period that the town has to reconcile the year end, but it's only a fifteen day window.
Mr. McCurdy, your hand's still up, satisfied?
Yes, no, I'm not. I actually, I wanted to say I am in support of paying this because there are obligations of the town. But I am concerned that, you know, this comes in at this time of the year. I've been in town meeting a while. We don't, you know, ordinarily have these three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of prior year bills that need ninety percent approval, and I wonder what is going to be in place to make sure that, you know, these are cleared when they should be cleared in the future. It seems with this many of them that, you know, there's a, there's a structural issue perhaps that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Ms. Conlon, can you address his concern?
Yeah, there's not a structural issue. This is, we've had these articles in the past. We have, you know, not every year do we have one, but some years we have had to, oftentimes, they've been medical bills that went back a long period of time, but we're talking about bills that came in at some point in July, and we're not talking about bills that came in in October. So this is all being handled according to the process that is in place that the state requires, and there's really not anything out of the ordinary about this practice.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Tracus, you're recognized. If you can unmute, there you go.
Hi, Chris Tracus, precinct ten here. Just a quick question. I, you know, of course, agree, we need to pay these bills, and that's the right thing to do. The questions I have are, it looks like there's eight bills here, so what we're saying is that eight bills out of probably hundreds and hundreds and hundreds that you get during the course of a year happened to cross over after July fifteenth. That's, that's question number one. And question two is this process of having to approve this in the town meeting and the nine tenths vote, is that something that's in state law? Is that in Department of Revenue procedures? Is that in the town of Milton bylaws? I'm just wondering, you know, where this process and the nine tenths figure comes from. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Understood. I'll ask town council, because town council has informed me that it's state law. I'm just not sure which chapter and paragraph. Or Ms. Conlon, do you happen to know that exact answer?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, it's Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty four C, section sixty four, is the statutory authority for the nine tenths vote, and Mr. Tracus's first question, his understanding is correct.
Very good. Thank you. I see two Virginia King and Diana Agostino remaining. Ms. King, you're recognized.
Virginia Donahue King, precinct three. I think part of the, the issue that, that some of the questions have come up with are that we have, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is for last fiscal year. I kind of have two questions, and they're related, so I'm having trouble formulating them, but I'll do my best. First of all, we have a requirement to have ninety percent vote for this to pass, so it seems like it's something that needs to pass a very high scrutiny with, with the town meeting. And so I, it just seems kind of funny that it's that this much importance is given to this kind of a a request to have our bills paid. So it occurred to me that perhaps maybe these are funds that have not been allocated from the prior year. Are these funds that were anticipated or budgeted in some fashion? And that's why and, and so that would make sense that we would vote for it ninety percent to nothing, or, or to whatever, ninety percent at least, or is it, is it funds that we didn't budget for, and that's why we have to have such a high percent voting for it today because it kind of went beyond last year's budget? The funds are allocated for last year, so if I could have an answer on those two issues, I'd be very appreciative, and I think maybe some other people out there would too.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Conlon, can you answer those?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, let me just correct the citation that I just gave you. I, I was told that it's Mass General Law, it's chapter forty four, section sixty four. I think I said chapter forty four C. I think I said Chapter forty four C, it is just Chapter forty four, so for anyone who's going to go look it up, that's the correction. This is not an issue of items not being budgeted, the fire station amount, three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, that's, that was a capital fund that was to be paid last year. Some of these revolving funds, the Amazon bill eighteen thirty four, that's paid out of the park department's revolving fund. Again, it's not that the department overspent any funds or that this wasn't budgeted. This was just, the invoice came in after the close of the fiscal year. So Van Assen Associates, the peer reviewers bills are being paid by the developers of the proposed forty B projects. But the money is flowing through the town, so this peer reviewers bill came in after July fifteenth. And we're now paying it in October because this is the earliest town meeting, but all of these were items that were budgeted through the police budget, the law budget or other budgets. And there's not a question of something not being budgeted, it's just a matter of a timing of when the bills were received.
Ms. King, is that satisfied, get your question answered?
Yes, that does beautifully, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the audience, I recognize that there is a Patricia Gilmartin that has entered the attendee pool. Ma'am, I'm sorry, we don't, the town clerk tells me you are not an elected town meeting member, so we're going to have to remove you from the attendee pool and you're welcome to watch the proceedings on Milton Cable Access, so host, if you could remove, thank you. Now proceed to Ms. Agostino and there's, there's a question, Ms. Kelly has asked me to read on her behalf since her audio is failing, Ms. Agostino, you're recognized.
The unmute button just came up, so I'll back up. Diane DiTulio Agostino, Precinct Nine, I just want to alleviate any of the, you know, I've been a town meeting member for, God, forty some years. I want to alleviate anyone's concerns, this being told nine tenths would is the first issue that would raise question marks because I, I don't recall ever having an article that required nine tenths, so I immediately did a Google for mass laws that allows payment of bills. And if it was an annual town meeting, some of you town meeting members might recall, then only four fifths of the vote would be required. So since I am so supportive of the fire department and have, you know, have no qualms that if you read Section sixty four, Chapter forty four, Section sixty four, it explains in here how thorough the review has to be done of these bills before they can even be put on the warrant for us to agree to get them paid. So they had to be fully vetted that these bills were requested, services, services were provided. And I strongly hope that we get close to a hundred percent yes to get these bills paid and move on with our fire department buildings, thank you.
Thank you. Just need a moment with the town clerk for a second, pardon me. Another housekeeping item, there is an individual in the attendee list identified as James. James, could you unmute and identify yourself?
This is Jim McCall, the town treasurer.
Jim McCall, thank you, sir, if you could change your name in Zoom so we, the clerk can identify you, that would be helpful, thank you. With that, I do have a question that came in from Mary Kelly, Precinct Nine. Let me just look at it for a moment, said, could someone ask what budgets these bills will be paid from, which FY two twenty two department budget? I'll pass that to Ms. Conlon to answer and you can hand off as needed. And Ms. Kelly's from Precinct Nine, she says.
Mr. Moderator, they're going to be paid out of the FY twenty two budget is my understanding, and as for departments, Hemant Way and Barnes is the legal budget. The next two, the Department of State Police and the Criminal Justice Information Services are the police budget. Conica Minolta is a, might be town Select Board's office or Central Business Office, it's one of the town hall departments. Context Architecture is the fire building project, capital, that's a capital item. My understanding is Milton Times is an advertisement either for the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals. Van Assen Associates is the Board of Appeals and Amazon is the Parks Revolving Fund.
I'll see if Ms. Kelly types anything back, but that sounded like the answers that she was looking for. At this point, I see one hand raised. Brian Walsh.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Brian Walsh, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member and Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, I know the hour is late, but I felt it important since there's a three hundred and thirty six thousand dollar item under context architecture, that in fact is the architect that we Fire Station Building Committee has hired. Quickly, I want town meeting members to understand, we have had two different appropriations in two thousand and eighteen, two point seven million dollars was appropriated for us to in fact engage architectural services and OPM. And then in two thousand and twenty one, we had thirty two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that have been appropriated as we undertake the building construction. What's happened here is we've had context architecture, architecture has done terrific work for us, we are very happy, they've done it in phases, the first phase was a three hundred and twenty five thousand dollar phase, it sort of designed development as we went through it. And then we've started a, a second and third phase, the bills, you know, maybe there's probably a lot of reasons why, including our need to be a little bit more diligent in processing them. But the, the, we, these, this bill is within our budget. It is appropriate work, it is being done very well, we're thrilled and, and we have not exceeded that two point seven million dollar budget to pay this bill and I thought it was important for town meeting members to know that. And we, in fact, our last Fire Station Building Committee meeting, we had a long discussion about this to, to have a lot more diligence about getting these bills through the process so that we won't have this situation in the future. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, seeing no other hands raised, I'll ask that we proceed to the vote, so can we move the panelists to attendee? So now we are voting on Article Six as it is printed in your warrant on page fourteen. All set, very good, we can put up the poll. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes, all opposed, signify by voting no, all abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could unmute the phones.
Yes.
I heard, we're waiting for both phones are unmuted, so host or both phones, okay, all in favor on the phones, please signify by voting yes.
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 Opposed, vote no. Thank you, we can mute the phones. And I think we can close the poll and present the results. The vote comes to one hundred and sixty seven out of one hundred and seventy two votes and we were at ninety six percent before I added in the two phones, so we had clearly passed the ninety percent threshold. So the motion carries at, I will get the exact percent with the clerk, but in excess of ninety percent, so I declare a ninety percent vote. With that, we'll proceed to Article Seven, I'd like to recognize Katie Conlon of the Select Board, Ms. Conlon, you're recognized. We're moving you back to panelists for a moment. There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With respect to Article Seven, we are requesting that this article be referred to the Select Board for further study and the reason for that is the article and the recommendation refer to transferring funds from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund. That should have been to the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund rather than the General Fund and our understanding is that that amendment could not be made because it would be outside the scope of the article. So we're asking that this be returned to us for further study and with the hope that we would bring this back if we have a winter town meeting or at the May annual town meeting if necessary.
I see a second from Ms. Agostino, some motion made in second, we have a motion to refer, does anyone wish to speak to this motion to refer? Please raise your hand in the, in the tool. I am seeing, no, by the way, I didn't read this, I should read this, which is recommended that the town vote to transfer six hundred thousand dollars from the Capital Stabilization Fund to the General Fund. I see Andres Lessing is the one hand raised, sir, you're recognized.
Okay, Andres Lessing, Precinct Eight, and my only question is that these funds were supposed to be used for the Fire Station Building Committee? You know, for the Fire Station Building Project and I want to just make sure that not doing this is not going to cause harm to that project.
Ms. Conlon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, that is correct, there is no harm to the building project for, by sending this back for the study at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other hands raised, so if we could move the panelists to attendee and we'll then put up the poll in a moment.
Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry, you're right, Mr., I made a mistake, I did not recognize Chair Asher of the Warrant Committee, Chair Asher, you're recognized for the Warrant Committee's opinion.
The Warrant Committee unanimously concurs with the decision of the Select Board to take back the article.
Thank you very much. Good, we can put up the poll then. And with that, all those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by saying voting yes, all opposed, vote no, all abstaining, please vote abstain, if we could unmute the phones. On the phones, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We can mute the phones. And with that, we can close the poll and present the results. The motion carries with ninety six percent yes, two percent no, and two percent abstain. With that, I have a motion to dissolve from Ms. Agostino, it is seconded by Lee Michael McLean. If we could make sure all the panelists are still back in the attendee pool. Pardon me, host, can you re-present the last poll results? Is that possible? Sorry, the town clerk just needed to capture a screenshot here. Madam Clerk, we ready? Okay, with that, let's close this result. Now we're going to be voting on motion to dissolve town meeting, are we ready, host? If we can put up the polling question. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes, all opposed, please vote no, all abstaining, please vote abstain, could we unmute the phones?
Yes.
As a yes?
Yes.
Yes, we can unmute the phones. I think we can close the poll and present the results. The motion carries ninety eight percent yes, one percent no, one abstain. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, one and done, we are dissolved.